Tim, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm gonna put you back on mute and we will let you know when we start.
Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the July 3 regular meeting of the Kenai City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here to join us this evening. It's a beautiful evening out there, so you must have something serious you're here about. So, thank you for participating. If you are able, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gabriel.
Here.
Councilmember Peterkin is absent. Councilmember Petty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Navar. Vice Mayor Navar.
I'd like to let the record show that Councilmember Peterkin has arrived to join us, 6:01.
Councilmember Malloy.
Here.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning.
Here.
Councilmember Naxit.
Did you want to take a minute?
Vice Mayor Navar, are you here?
Yes, here.
Okay, too many buttons up here. You have a form.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, before we get to agenda approval, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown with requested revisions to the agenda packet, action add to item D1, Resolution Number 2019-45, amendment memo, and amended facility manage, manage, facility, amended facility agreement, sorry, requested by the city manager, action remove item G2, purchase orders over $15,000 requested by the city clerk, and add to item G3, special use permit for use of this city dock, amended special use permit requested by the city manager. Pleasure, Counsel. Councilmember Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to approve the agenda with requested revisions to the agenda and packet listed by the mayor requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda. Councilmember Naxit.
I move for approval of the consent agenda, request unanimous consent.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to any item that is on the consent agenda this evening, which is denoted with an asterisk next to it? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we have under item B, scheduled public comments. We have none. Next up is unscheduled public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Please come forward, and I will yield the floor to you, just right here at the podium there, if you would. And if you would, just give your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Odom. I live at 1006 Cackneway. Can I? And I'm really nervous.
Don't be. I'm nervous than you are. Got your back, girl.
Oh, you got the gun. Shit. Okay, I was hoping that you could put on the agenda or approve or talk about residents getting water meters? Because I guess the only people that can get, have water meters are businesses in Kenai. They do have them in Saldana, a couple of residences. And being a single person, living by myself, I know I don't use, okay, as close to $100, it's $96 and some odd cents, $100 bucks a month for water. And, I mean, I've gotten so ticked off at times where I'll just water the pavement outside, you know, because I'm not a family of even two. So, I would like to be able to have a meter so that I would be able to justify the water that I've used and to say, okay, I've used it, instead of just everybody paying the same amount. Another thing, if anybody would like to borrow the water from my house to water Kenai, I tell you what, this place is dry.
I would.
And you may have it. I've got plenty of it. And I'm just amazed that we aren't trying to water and keep our city beautiful. Okay, I think that's all I have.
Yeah, and on that note, it has been super dry, and it's been, I know, Saldana's kind of struggling with the same thing over there, and probably everybody is, at least on the peninsula. I know Arlen is suffering too, so. Is there any, would you mind taking questions or comments from council? Councilmember Glenn Dunning.
Yeah, just an observation for the water meter. Is there, is there an option for a residence to have a water meter installed, Paul? Is that, is that in our menu, or is that, you have to research it?
Ms. Rose Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glenn Dunning, no, there's not an option for a residence to have a water meter. And that's primarily because our rate study that was done approximately five years ago, might be slightly longer than that, the, all the rates were based on that rate study. So, at that point, we didn't consider a water meter. If the council were to consider one, it would be appropriate to include that in our next rate study, which is actually scheduled for sometime in the next year. A couple of the issues with, with water meters, and I know I did talk to Saldana about this recently, they're considering getting rid of the option for residences. One of the reasons is because there's additional administrative cost with meter, it requires someone goes out and reads it. You could have someone self-report, but even then, there's additional work that you need to do administratively as far as putting the numbers in and then billing differently. Probably the biggest consideration when you, when you think about doing a water meter is it's going to change the entire rate structure of the facility, because as you know, we need X amount of revenue to provide water for the entire city regardless of how that revenue is generated. So, what it would likely do is change the rate structure for folks that are not on residential water meters, if we had a significant number that chose to, to opt into the, to the water meter. The only reason it would make any sense is in, in a case like this where you feel that you're using less than the water that, that is the average household uses. The way our rates are based on now is that the average water usage in a home per month is approximately 10,000 gallons. That's what it's based on. So, if you feel like you're using less than that, then you would, then you could do a water meter. But what that means is that person's gonna be paying less. We still need the same amount of revenue to run the facility, and so it would have to change the entire rate structure. So, it, it's worth a discussion. There's just a lot of things to consider if that, if that is going to be an option that the city is, is gonna consider.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning.
Just to follow up, what is the threshold for installing a meter? Is it a duplex, a fourplex, a small business? Where, where do we, where do we begin with, with the metering?
Ms. Rose Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glenn Dunning, it's commercial entities only. I'm not sure if multifamily residence qualifies for that. I believe they do, but I'm not certain if, if that's considered, if it's an option that's available to them.
But why, sorry.
Councilmember Peterkin.
Does, this might be a question for Paul. Does, does, on a resident, does, does everybody pay the same? Like, like, I have a lot of people in my house, and then she doesn't have very many. Does everyone pay the same?
Ms. Rose Turner.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Peterkin, every done, it's a flat rate for all residents in the city, based on the average usage. So, certainly, some houses, your house may use way more than normal, other houses don't, but we, we blend it, and it's an average use, and that, that's what that monthly rate is, is based on, and everyone pays the same.
Follow up. Yeah, I, I can, huh, I thought it was, I, and I got a lot of people in my house, so, so I can definitely feel what you're experiencing. I think we'll look more into this a little bit.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
What they do in Saldana is the person, the resident, has to buy a meter, has to get the plumber to put it in or whatever, and it costs about, I guess, I mean, it was about $1,000. And then they're billed for according how much they use on water, just like a meter would. And it was my understanding today, because I talked to somebody there today, that there, those people are sort of like grandfather write-in, so they're not gonna be able to discontinue, I don't think, their meters, even though they may not want to have meters. Because I can see where it costs more money and stuff like this, but in the long run, you know, the people that have a big house or a big, big amount of people in their house should pay more. I mean, why should I pay more, or the same amount that everybody else is, if I'm not using it? But, anyway.
Councilmember Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I, I think the rate study is a proper time to look at this, and I think it, we should have the discussion and encourage that it be looked at as part of the rates study.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and as, as far as I said, I've, I've never had this issue, but that as far as I can recall, since I've been on council, over the last nine years. So, it's, it is an interesting.
Years ago, I asked for meters, and I think I might have talked to Paul this year, or maybe last year, but before that, I asked for meters. I called somebody, I don't remember, because I've been here for a long time. And, yeah, but when it just went up again, you know, because I think when I was here, it started at $46 or something like this, it wasn't hardly anything, maybe even less. But anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning, it looks like you've got, Ms. Odom, looks like you've got another.
Just to, just to close the loop, I, the last time I was trudging the streets and ringing doorbells and putting election flyers on the doorknobs, I got quite a bit of blowback over our, over our water fees and structure and the inequities between someone in your situation, say, and, and someone with a, with a home with five or six kids. And, so, it, it's worth a discussion, anyway. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Ms. Odom, and you did, you did great.
Girl power.
Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to, to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda or consent agenda?
You're just about the city? Okay, yes.
Yes, just, yep.
Well, it wasn't planned, I'm gonna do it. Okay. Can I do it? Okay, I sure can. I hate doing this. I really hate speaking in public. I'm more nervous than you are. I beat you. I'm gonna talk about, and I'm gonna be very careful with my words, I'm gonna try to be. I have bad temper, Bob knows me. Shit, blame my, my father, half Scottish, half Irish, blame, blame my Aleut grandma. And I had a grandbaby this morning, anyway, a little girl named Hudson, like Hudson River. I'm so excited. I gotta get up to the native hospital, she's up there. But, I want to address the crime situation in Kenai. It's really bad. And I live in Central Heights, which is, I've lived there for almost four years, and I love my neighborhood, love the people in my neighborhood, except for the drug dealers, and now the child molesters on the outskirts, and maybe have something going on at Walkerly, it might deal with human trafficking. So, it's been bad. Friend of mine died, and he died of a meth-induced heart attack. And I'm not at liberty to say his name, but he got it from a drug house that should have been shut down a long time ago, I feel. I will say, and Lord help me, Jesus help me with my tongue, I will say that I'm not a law enforcement officer. I, you know, come from a family in military. I have one of my cousins in, no, wait, see, my daddy was from Fredericksburg, Virginia, and Dempsey was in, Dempsey D. Wilson, he was a sheriff for a long time in, not Alexandria, but Fairfax County, Virginia. So, I do have, you know, I know the, the ethics and the morals and stuff of police officers, and, and, and just that, you know, biblically, how we're supposed to be. And I know that honesty should be number one. So, I'm gonna be careful because I'm going up to Anchorage to see my grandbaby, and there's an FBI building there, and there is, you know, Don Levy, I met him, Don Levy, and, you know, I know that people have losses. And I know that honesty, I know that people in high positions should not lie. And I know that Paul knows what I'm talking about, and Bob, and Brian. So, I'm gonna be careful because I am not a mean person. I have a good heart. Am I perfect? No, nobody is but Jesus Christ, the Father, the Son, the Holy Ghost, Holy Spirit, however you want to say it. But I do know that people are dying. My family's dying. My dad was murdered when I was six years old. I know. It goes really deep. And I know he's in heaven. I dreamed about him right when I needed it. And my grandmother was half Aleut and half German, and they're still dying. I got to London, my cousin Marvin, Perzou, died, and his death is under investigation, and it's meth. Nobody held a gun to his head. Nobody held a gun to the guy's head in my neighborhood. Nobody's holding a gun to anyone's head to make him do it. You can lay a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. But they're dying, right and left. Joanie Percy, that was burned out there and all this stuff going on, that given me the chills, man. I ain't watching Ozark anymore. Uh-uh, not only is it seedy and yuck, it's real. Mexican cartel's here. Do I know them, and are they all Mexican? Heck, no. But they're here. Joanie Percy, you don't die doing meth, sitting there burning your car, along with Daniel Doug. I just, I can't say, you know, I rented my cabin to a family member. I have property, I'm a property owner. Joanie was, her daughter, Dougie, Joanie was married to Dougie Percy. Dougie Percy's my blood relative. He drowned Spirit Lake. He was drunk, it was his own fault. But Joanie did not die the way that you're hearing she died. They're killing each other, they're offing each other. I mean, my neighborhood is so bad right now that I- I mean, my neighborhood is so bad right now that I hate guns and I literally, I've shot one once with my son-in-law. My son-in-law committed suicide a few years ago. He was in, got out of the Navy and he got hooked on heroin in North Carolina and my daughter's a nurse. And nobody has to feel sorry for me, what doesn't kill you makes you stronger. But he, he couldn't get off and my daughter's a nurse, she kicked him out. She, she felt guilty, but she said, "I couldn't have him living with me, I had keys to Randleman County Hospital." I said, "Summer, the only thing you did wrong was not tell us and we would have done intervention, he just got out of the Navy, got hooked on heroin, only took a few months." He hung himself, he couldn't get off. He loved my daughter, he was doing things he normally wouldn't do. You know, I know he's with me, I feel him every day and I don't do ghosts and all that shit.
Oh, Miss May, just watch that.
Excuse me, sorry. I was raised in a house where everyone said it and I, when I get mad, I say it. Father forgive me. Anyway, let me finish. My neighborhood's bad. I have the floor. It's bad, Central Heights is bad. And it's, uh, you know, Walker Lane and all around there. When I do neighborhood watch, I go up clear to Phil Reams' church, who's a friend of mine. I'm having a meeting with him pretty soon. He's been a friend of mine for years, I've contributed to his library. I have a bad neighborhood full of crime. I think it's weird when Clint Lagason, who's now the treasurer of Kenai's Indian Tribe, he's like his son to me, when I'm in London, he's calling me long distance and, and telling me that there's child molesters and KPD is telling them, "We have to give them thirty-day notice." Well, they don't own the land, that's shillings from what I understand, or loftsteads, and they're both friends of mine. It's like, and I haven't had time to do all this, I've got funerals and everything else going on all around me. Why would you have to give a child molester, two of them now, a thirty-day notice when they're looking at the kids in my neighborhood? Why should someone die from a meth-induced heart attack when weapons were being brought in? Somebody called me in Nashville to tell me about it and I get ahold of who I think are the right people, but there's no raid done on the house? I mean, why? And, and so, you know what, I'm gonna leave and I'm gonna go babysit and, and I'm gonna go on with my life and I'm not gonna live in fear, because I'm not. You know, but I'm not gonna deal with this anymore. I'm going to Anchorage and I'm going to be talking to people because nothing has been done here. Nothing has changed. I know the cops have their hands full. I know that. But it's like a wildfire, this is it, this is what, you know, I'm getting. It's like a wildfire. Years ago, everyone's trying, 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 trying. Come on, let's step it up here, KPD. You know, and, and, and now it's like a full-blown wildfire, how are we gonna put it out? I grew up in Anchorage, Anchorage was nice. Now look at it, every day there's a shooting. It's coming here.
That's right. Miss May, I just wanted to tell you that I do agree with a lot of what you said. There, there is a problem statewide.
Yeah, worldwide.
Yeah, na- nationally, I mean, outside of the community, you know, state, nationally, worldwide, absolutely. You're, you're, you, you can't be more correct about that. And the consequences of that, those are, are terrible. And we do need to go after these drugs and our, our police department does work with the feds.
They do?
Yes.
Well, I know they do. I know they do, but I'm hearing different things and I'm trying not to believe anything.
Okay, okay. And I, and I'm sure...
I go on proof, I go on fact, that's it.
And, you know, on some level, I, I agree with the, with the, that their process more than the problem is broken. The, the process leads to the problem in some cases of the, what you have to do for due process.
I was told by Senator, friend of mine, that SB ninety-one, that police can use it as an excuse. And that's because he comes to dinner at my home.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about other civil rights, federal, federal civil rights.
Right.
But, but there are certain processes that has, have to be followed. I mean, there's things that, that, you know, that it's not just as simple as, you know, doing a raid if you see someone carrying guns in their house. I carry guns into my house and I hope I didn't get raided.
Well, okay.
My point being, I, I, but I, but I'm not disagreeing with a lot of what you're saying, I'm just saying that there's processes that have to be, uh, here too.
And I know that. Like I said, my cousin was a sheriff. I, I deal with Wilson County sheriffs in Tennessee. I know good police force. I know Mount Juliet Police and I'm not trying to down anyone, so I'm not mentioning any names here, but Mount Juliet Police, they're on it. I mean, it's like, they don't mess around, you know, and, and I know, I've seen good police work, I've seen bad police work. And I'm not trying to be mean. But you know, uh... I lost my train of thought because I'm upset, but I have property, this is an example. I have property with Clint Lagason and I, I have a lot. And I'm gonna actually open, I'm not gonna tell anyone my secret, because I'm gonna open something there. And I'm gonna buil- build it. And so, I'm gonna have builders. But, but one time, KPD used my property. My, my family will come and stay on my property and dip net, my native family, because that's how, you know, they're subsistence, they're from Dillingham, my grandmother's born in Togiak, blah, blah, blah. So anyway, here they are, are staying on my property during the day. And this was years ago, I'm gonna, I'm, this is all gonna be brought up. I mean, it should be documented. So wait, I'm almost done. So anyway, my family's sitting there and all of a sudden, all KPD gets out and they're, they're, "Shh, you know, we know this is Cheryl Man's property and we're gonna go make a raid." Well, it's during the day. Wait a minute, wait. Drug dealers, you know, I'm not one. Did I ever do drugs and alcohol in Anchorage? You betcha. If I would've done meth and heroin, I'd probably be dead, you betcha. Marijuana's legal now, I might go home and take a puff of my friend Laura and have a glass of red wine. It's legal. But during the day, they're sleeping. Their job is at night. Drug dealers, and, and there's always an exception to the rule. Believe me, I know, I got my in-laws and outlaws. Today, I called two cops in KPD, said, "Look, I'm turning in my cousin, go get him. Go get him, because he's messing with someone, had a traffic freak and shit, excuse my language, he's gonna be killed. He's gonna be, okay?" So during the day? Let's go during the day, nobody's there, there's no cars out there. And at night, when all the cars are out there, what the heck? Why are you making a raid during the day, you fools?
Miss May, okay, Miss, Miss May.
No, I said it, I said it.
Councilmember Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Uh, Mrs. May, thank you for coming to speak with us tonight.
Yeah, I gotta go.
We, uh, we, we do hear your concerns and, you know...
I can't, it's gonna get worse and worse.
We do, we do, um, you know, our, our best to provide through the budget the resources that our police department needs.
The night he's helping you, I mean, there's a lot of help, I hear you.
And, uh, and, uh, and so, you know, we're, we, we, we share your concern. Um, also, congratulations on the birth of your, of your grandbaby.
She looks like my son, I'm so worried about her.
That's fantastic news. So, thanks very much.
I wouldn't make pretty woman, thank you, Bob.
Thank you so much for coming to speak with us tonight.
Thank you all, and I'm praying for everyone. I don't hate anyone, I don't have it in me. I don't have it in me, but, you know, those drug dealers, man, I mean, I have a gun now, I've only shot one once with my son-in-law in North Carolina with my husband's son-in-law, now I got my own. So, you know, I don't wanna go out there, but if they're gonna act like it's the Wild West, I am too. I mean, let's, let's, let's get a step on it. I am going up to Anchorage, there is an FBI building and there's lots of people to talk to there because I just feel helpless, I really do. So, thank you all for listening.
And if there's something you have to be passionate about, I'm, that's a good subject to be, very good.
Well, this is our city. Why am I living here from Anchorage? A born Polmer, raised in Anchorage, I don't wanna live in Anchorage no more. You know, and I don't want Anchorage here. Who does? And, and there's a lot of good to it, but shoot. If they're offing each other, then there's a lot of bad. They're doing it. Ask my family, let's go to the grave, you guys wanna go to the graveyard with me? They'll invite me out, come on, let's go.
Thank you, Miss May.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda?
I'm not speaking, but...
Oh, okay. Oh. Well, you, the floor's open, if you, if there's something you wanted to say, just, if you have any thoughts on anything. Okay.
I think I was throwing out the form when the consent agenda item was. I'd like to say just a few brief words.
What, what item was it?
I don't know if I can talk, is, is that, is that the right time?
Um, it's not, it's not on the consent agenda. And although, I can open it up for public comment when we get to that.
Okay. Just, just give me a wait when it's time.
Yep. No problem. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to any item that's not on the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to, uh, item D, public, uh, public hearings. Uh, Vice Mayor Navarre, you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. And I would like to recognize, um, Ms. Linda Swerner, a former councilmember has joined us and one of our harbor member, uh, commission members, Mr. Peters is in the audience. Under item D one, Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash forty-five, authorizing a facility management agreement with the Kenai Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, Inc., for the operation and management of the Kenai Visitor Center and Cultural Center. There's a clerk's note that council may convene in, in executive session to discuss this agenda item, a matter of which the immediate knowledge may have an adverse effect upon the fin- finance of the city. AS forty-four point six-two point three-one zero C one. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Um, move to, uh, approve Resolution Number two zero one nine forty-five.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak, uh, to Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash forty-five? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Malloy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Looking at the laydown, uh, in the packet, I wanted to, uh, make a, a motion to amend the, uh, Resolution Number two zero one nine forty-five. And I'm gonna do this as one motion, uh, move to amend the second, whereas to read, whereas, comma, the award of the agreement is in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars beginning July four two thousand nineteen or as soon as possible thereafter and ending June thirty twenty twenty. And, uh, move to amend section two to read that the compensation for the facility management services agreement shall not exceed ninety-five thousand, sufficient funds have been budgeted.
Second.
Any discussion on the proposed amendment?
You question unanimous consent?
Thank you, councilmember next. unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection?
No objection.
Seeing none, we have, uh, Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash forty-five as amended before us. Any further discussion from, comments from council? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call her all.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Navarre?
Yes.
Councilmember Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Council, we're now on item D two, Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash forty-six, Selecting Divining Point LLC for City of Kenai Tourism and Marketing Services, requested by administration. Pleasure, council. Councilmember next then.
I move for approval, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash forty-six. Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash forty-six? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Discussion, councilmember next then.
Uh, just kind of a general question, I suppose, for the city manager, if he could tell us about Divining Point LLC in general.
Mr. Ross, turn it.
Uh, through the mayor, councilmember next. Ed, Divining Point LLC is a firm that's based in Austin, Texas. As the, the memo states, and I believe the, the resolution states, we went out to an RFP looking for marketing services for the city. Uh, Divining Point was the only responsive, uh, participant in the RFP process. Um, we have talked with Divining Point over the last couple of months, um, a, a number of times and, um, they actually have one of their staff members that previously lived in the Kenai area, which I think was the connection that led them to, to proposing on, on the RFP itself. But, um, they seem to be a very capable firm, again, located in Austin.
Requesting unanimous consent?
Unamis consent was requested, is there any objection?
No objection.
Seeing, hearing none. Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash forty-six is, is adopted. Next, under item D three, Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash forty-seven, Providing for the Submission to the Qualified Voters of the City of Kenai at the Regular Election of October first two thousand nineteen, the Question of Amending Article Ten Elections of the Charter of the City of Kenai to Provide Designated Seats for Each Council Position and Allow Qualified Voters to Vote in an Election for a Candidate for Each Seat, Requested by Councilmembers Naxted and Vice Mar- or Councilmember Naxted and Vice Mayor Navarre. Pleasure, council, councilmember next then.
I move for approval of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash forty-seven.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash forty-seven? Ms. Swerner?
Linda Swerner, two ninety-eight Rogers Road, Kenai. I'm asking you not to put this to the voters. As a twenty-one-year member of the Kenai City Council and as watching the charter for part of that time, because I didn't live in Kenai in nineteen sixty or sixty-one, but I think that the charter was written very well at that time. And as a resident of Kenai and as a former council member, I think the way that the charter was written has worked very well. Sometimes when there, for the two seats that were open, when I ran for election or reelection, there might've been six people or three people running for those two seats. So, the top two vote-getters got elected. And if you start designating seats, you may not get the best people on the council. Because when you give the opportunity to the voters to select the top two vote-getters, that's the cream of the crop. And I, I just don't, I don't see the benefit of designating seats. And if, let's see, is this the, would you, uh, would these seats be designated, I guess, to the, um, sponsors of the, um, resolution? Would these be designated be, um, for, um, areas of the city or would they just be designated?
Um, I, I can, I believe they're just designated. There's no, they're not for geographical area of the city.
And it's kinda fun, actually, to mix up your seats here or the longest person that's on the council gets to choose which seat you're on, because that's musical chairs. And, and then you get to see the different comments, how it's on the facial comments. So, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, is there any questions of Ms. Swerner? Councilmember, uh, Petty?
Thank you, Ms. Swerner, for coming and testifying against this, because as I was reading this, I was trying to understand the justification of why this was being put forth at this time. And with, uh, uh, having the long history of how it's been working, uh, and it seems, from my point of view, that it's been a very smoothly working process. I was trying to understand the necessity of the change of that. So, I appreciate your comments and your wisdom and your understanding and giving the insight. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess, you know, why fix something if it's not broken?
Councilmember Malloy?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Swerner, for coming to speak with us. And I recall I had the privilege of serving with you, um, you know, during one of your last terms. And, uh, here, you know, um, my concern about this, and I, I, I tend to agree with you, is, uh, is that it could lead to partisanship, you know, um, in, in the election. partisanship, you know, in the election. And recently, in a past election, even though there weren't designated seats, we had one candidate that targeted specifically another candidate, and it was pretty negative and ugly. And, no, I know, I know it was, you weren't, you were neither the target nor the targetee.
I remember, I remember.
Yeah, yeah, or the targeter or whatever. But, you know, so, anyway, enough said. But, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments from Ms. Swerner? Thank you. Are you gonna testify on the other charter?
I am.
Oh, good, because I have a question on one also. Thank you. Anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution 2019-47? Mr. Peters?
I'm Bob Peters. I live in Old Town, Kenai. And I'm not a big guy on change, you know. And this is a change. And all of you were elected under the current rules, and I'm sure you think those were good choices. My thoughts on this are, they had a lot of trouble with elections in the past. A state called Florida, I remember, eight or 10 years ago, had a little trouble with the count, who voted for who and what was that. Just in the last presidential election, there was some trouble. And the problem with this, I'll agree with Linda, is we as citizens do want the best people qualified. And so, and I may misunderstand this, because I'm, you know, I haven't devoted the time that I'm sure you all have to. But I'm thinking, for seat A example, we have Bill and Joe, and they're running. And then for seat B, we have Mary and Frida, and they're running. And so, in seat A, Joe gets 1,000 votes, and Bill gets 10 votes. So, Joe wins that. Okay, good for him. And then we have Frida and whoever. And Frida gets 1,100 votes, and Mary gets 1,050. So, Mary isn't elected, even though she got more votes. And so, then people are whining, well, gee, he was a better guy. He should, he got the most votes. I think that it's probably best if we just leave it the way it is. The two that get the most votes win. That's, that's just my opinion.
Any questions of Mr. Peters?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2019-47? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Do one of the sponsors want to, councilmember next then.
I guess I could start. And thank you, Linda Swerner and Mr. Peters, for coming tonight. And your opinions are valid, that the, you know, the existing process has worked. And, but, you know, we're just looking, or I am looking at what I think might be some improvements within our charter, which is 56 years old, you know. And what I kind of want to point out is, you know, we already have a designated seat currently, and that would be the mayor's seat. That's a designated spot. That's not a council person. I think in a lot of ways, too, it might increase the number of candidates that we might see looking to run. If you have two candidates that are running and you're considering to run, let's say you're part of the public and you're wanting to run too, you may elect not to run, because you don't want to hurt the chances of one of the two candidates that you really like, and you're really, maybe not as much for the other one perhaps. And this actually gives you the option or the opportunity to run against a particular seat as opposed to just a gambit of who gets, you know, gets what. In talking with the clerk, it seems that it's possible that perhaps the public might be a little confused sometimes with the way the voting is. Now that they can actually vote for two people, they often, very frequently, just vote for one. And there might be some political reasons for some to do that, but it could be that they don't realize that they can vote for two. If it's by seat, they're broken into different sections there, and they would, theoretically, we'd have more people voting for, you know, for the individuals as opposed to just one of the two. So, anyway, I think it's just another way to look at it that's similar to what Saldatna does, and it certainly works there also. And I think it could work well here in our city. It would be, it would be a change. My father was a senator of the charter, and I don't know how many of you knew him, but I'd say that he probably, he'd probably approve of this. So, that's all I have to say. I don't know if Tim has something more.
Vice Mayor Navar, do you want to add?
Yes. Yes, thank you. And I, and thank you, councilmember Naxted. The thing I'd like to add is, just for people's information, is if this passed by the voters in this next election, councilmember Naxted and myself would be the first two council people to be, in a sense, in targeted seats, if you want to call it. So, we're not just putting this out there and then not having some risk or issue. But I too believe it's a better process. If somebody wishes to run against me, then they can. When they have to run against two people and you get two votes, and as Councilman Naxted stated, some people in a campaign, you can say, just vote for one, because then it doesn't dilute my vote to one or the other two candidates who might be first or second, and it'll bump me up or bump whoever might be running. Again, I know that there's some of those political things that happen, and that doesn't really make it fair for the other people running. Doesn't make it unfair, but as Councilman Naxted said, you vote for two, a lot of people do. Some people just vote for one to give their candidate a better chance, and other people that voted for two, unbeknown, is hurting their one candidate sometimes. But anyway, it's a clear understanding of who the people are electing and who they're voting for. No more misunderstandings or vote for one, vote for two, top two get the vote, even if it's not a majority of the city is, and I appreciate the public testimony. But when six people are running for two seats, and you don't have a runoff, you don't always necessarily get the strongest candidate or the most one, because the, how the votes might have been voted for one, and then two, and so on and so forth. So, anyway, I would ask my fellow council members to support this and put it before the voters, and let's see what they say. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yeah, just a question of the maker of the motion. I, I'm looking, looking at my political theory here, and I'm thinking that if you have designated seats, any election that comes up would be, would be more issue-oriented. In other words, someone could run on a specific issue, or if someone was on the council that they had a discussion with, a political discussion with, that those two ideas could come to the fore between those individuals for that particular seat. And that may benefit the political discussion in our town. I'm just theorizing here, but I think for that reason, I will be supporting this, 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 this resolution. I think it'll be a little more spirited debate. Thank you.
Any other discussion from, Councilmember Roy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I have a different understanding after reading it than Vice Mayor Navar. I think that the next election, they would be, you know, there would be no designated seats. It would be the election after that, the election for 2020, where if this passed and if the voters approved it, that there would be, you know, an election that involved designated seats. So, the October 2019 election would be under the charter as exists. You know, I have a, you know, again, like I was expressing when former councilmember Swerner was speaking, you know, my concern is that I look at it a little bit differently than councilmember Glenn Denning. I think it could lead to a lot of targeting and, you know, negative political discourse, which we see at the state and national level. And I hate to see that come into the level of the City of Kenai, where, you know, in the election that you had, there was, there was five candidates for the two seats, and you and councilmember Glenn Denning rose to the top and were elected, and it's been a privilege to serve with you both. But it, there wasn't, there was, you know, every candidate identified issues and talked about what their vision was for the city and what they thought was the best interest of the city. But nobody was particularly targeted as being somebody that should be unelected. And that did happen more, you know, in a recent election, which to me was just an example of, of what I wouldn't see so. So, you know, for that reason, I'm not going to support this resolution. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Navar.
Just a clarification. I and councilmember Naxted are not up in 2019. We're up in 2020. And so, I was making the point that after this election, because it can't go into effect until after the election in 19, so the first election that this would affect anybody would be in 2020.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, that was what I think that was, what he meant to state in his original comments there. Any other discussion on Resolution 2019-48, or 47 or other? So, I guess I'll weigh in on it. You know, I, I've kind of racked my brain. And I guess I'm a little bit indifferent on this, to be honest with you. As some of you may know, and just so, just so folks know, this is, this is, would be a vote, if it's adopted, to put it on the ballot for the citizens of Kenai to decide whether they would want to approve that charter change. But some, some folks may know there's an election stakeholders' groups that's been, that was formed through the borough, that they're working on election issues right now. And this is, you know, some, it's been some interesting aspects from, kind of opened my eyes. And a lot of this has to do with kind of moving forward with, you know, how the borough wants to proceed, whether, you know, mail and vote by mail type of style of voting, things like that. But one of the things that was brought up was ranked choice voting. And I don't know if I still understand how that works, but in the kids, the idea behind it, it's supposed to help eliminate runoffs, where we don't have runoffs here in the City of Kenai, it's a simple majority. But in a case with the borough, you may have, you have to win more than 50% of the vote, or there's a runoff. Well, when you run through those scenarios, and ranked choice voting is sort of designed to eliminate that runoff, so you vote for every candidate on the ballot. And we ran through some scenarios, and even the person that had the most votes but didn't achieve the over 50%, didn't, in the scenarios we ran, did not win the election, you know, our mock election. So, I found that sort of interesting, how that would, how that sort of plays out, you know. So, when we talk about the most qualified or the best candidate, it depends on what format you're looking at, you know. It's confusing to some degree. So, again, I don't, I guess I'm indifferent to it. I know the City of Saldatna, I think, has the seats over there. I haven't really heard of anybody, you know, one way or the other on those, on how they do their elections, you know, whether we want to put it before the voters to let them decide. Yeah. I think I'm more interested in the second one on this, the next one down that I spoke to, that I mentioned earlier. Councilmember next then.
Just one last thing, and I heard something about, well, negativity may come out or something like that. And frankly, I'll be, you know, it'll happen during the 2020 election, and, which I presume to be in. But if somebody was running against me, and they had concerns about my voting record, or my opinions, or whatever, I don't consider that necessarily a negativity. It is a, it may be contrary to what I believe or I think, but it's what they think. And I, and I don't know how to put it other than bring it on if they, if they feel that way, and that would be what they're doing. I mean, you can be negative in a, in a unsocial sort of way, and I don't think that's what we're talking about. But I think if somebody is running against my seat, or me, specifically for specific political things we do here at the city, that that's absolutely fair game, and they should be able to do that. So, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
Councilmember Petty?
Just, if, I'm not sure who I need to ask about this, but you brought up the point about having 50% to be the winner. And so, if you had multiple people for one designated seat, and there wasn't a 50% winner, then there would have to be an additional runoff, which would, is that what would happen? And then there would be additional expense to the city?
For the city, no, for the city, we have a simple majority. So, it's the top two vote-getters are seated on the council. There's no runoff. I was just doing that as a...
But if we changed that, would that be the case? If we change it to what's proposed?
We'd have to change our charter to a runoff, which would add expense to elections generally.
But isn't that what we're trying to do right now, is change the charter?
But...
If this change happens, would that be put in place? That's a question that I have.
No, the runoff portion would not, isn't addressed on here. It's just simply that we'd have the same election format, in the sense that the person who got the most votes for that seat would be the winner, whether there was three people or more.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember next then.
Just to maybe clarify, ask the clerk the question. If, in this, in this scenario, if the voters were to approve it, would there be any additional cost to the city whatsoever that you would see?
Ms. Hines?
Not that I anticipate, no.
Okay.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor Navar?
Yes, just a quick wrap-up, too, that since there was some issue talking about negative campaigns, as councilmember Malloy mentioned, even in the process that we currently have, you have targeted or negative campaigning. And in that particular case, other people can, there's three or four people running, and yet, one or two people can attack one person to weaken them, or outside interests, which has happened, to weaken them. And it's really not against one or two people. It's, people don't know well. We just, we're just not voting for him. You don't want the campaign as saying, not voting for him, but voting for somebody that you know whoever gets the most votes are going to get elected. And that's some of the politics that I would like taken out of our current process, is somebody can attack somebody and not even be, know who it is, or just run for that office, be one of the six people that file for the seat, only for the purpose of attacking that one person. And when you have a choice of two, that's just the wrong way to run elections, is to vote against one person and to vote for somebody that you want to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Peterkin?
Yeah, this has been interesting. I, I guess the one thing that just kind of come to light to me is that if I was Joe Public and gonna run, I'd have to choose who I wanted to run against, instead of just saying I want to run the council in general. And I didn't really, wasn't that excited about running for this seat, but I wanted to contribute. So, I guess it was kind of easy, because I was just running in general. Just a thought.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call her all.
Councilmember Peterkin?
No.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Vice Mayor Navar?
Yes.
Councilmember Malloy?
No.
Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
No.
Motion fails.
Next up, we have Resolution Number 2019-48, Providing for the Submission to the Qualified Voters of the City of Kenai at the Regular Election of October 1, 2019, The Question of Amending Section 10-3, Filing to Remove the Requirement That Candidates for Mayor and Council Provide a Petition Signed by 20 or More Registered Voters. And this is being sponsored by Councilmember Naxted and Vice Mayor Navar. Pleasure, council. Councilmember next then.
Move for approval of Resolution 2019-48.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2019-48?
Linda Swerner, 298 Rogers Road. Thank you, and thank you for your vote in the previous resolution. I feel that 20 signatures is not too much to ask of someone that is interested in running for council. Because to me, it feels like, and it meant to me, I had some skin in the game. I took the effort, made the effort of going around and getting signatures. So, I was dedicated to running for the seat. I had been a member of the Library Commission and, you know, and attended meetings before I ran for election. But I think that when you have to go and get signatures of your neighbors, your friends, your relatives, or whoever else that's a registered voter in the City of Kenai, you have to put... registered voter in the city of Kenai, you have to put some effort into it. And so if you decide at 3:00 in the afternoon, the day that the petitions are due, you do have time to go get those signatures, because I did. You go to the senior center, you go to the school, you know, it's not that hard. And somebody can sign more than one petition. So I do feel that the 20 signatures, you do, you're more dedicated to running. There's no fee included. So, but it is, you have to do some legwork. And like Bob said, you know, go to the senior center. It's real quick and easy. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Swerner? I actually do have one.
Okay.
This is what I was alluding to prior. Do you know why this was put, because this hasn't changed in 50 years. So I mean, so proportionally, you'd have to think because of the population of the voting number of registered voters within the city, because you have to be a registered voter to sign a petition, was substantially less back then. So proportionally, you had to get quite a few more. So, I mean, if you were to, you know, look at things, you know, nowadays with our population versus what it was when the charter was enacted, I mean, you'd be looking at a lot more signatures. Anyway, I was just wondering if you knew the reason behind it.
My memory does not include that.
Okay.
Because that was never discussed, that I recall, on council. And so, but I'm not advocating that you should increase it because of the population, or anything. I think 20 is sufficient, and, no, those people don't have to vote for you.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, just, that was just a curiosity thing, because proportionally, you'd probably have to get a couple hundred signatures compared now to what it was back then.
You know, and that would be, that could be a deterrent.
Yes, yes, that's...
But 20, no. And, you know, if you're concerned about people that aren't registered voters, I don't know, the clerk might have some information, how many petitions are actually rejected because they don't have 20 signatures. I don't remember any, any ever coming, you know, when I was on council.
I think most folks, you know, shoot for 30, just to have a buffer in there, so, or 25. Councilmember Malloy, and then Peterkin?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. One change, since you were last elected, is that now the petition's available online, and you can download it. So you don't have to go into the clerk's office to get the petition. So, you know, just FYI.
Oh, I'm not interested in running.
Councilmember, Councilmember Peterkin?
I think if you can't get 20 people to vouch for you to run for city council, you probably shouldn't run.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Swerner.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution 2019-48? Seeing now, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Thank you, Linda, for your comments. And it really kind of, in my way of looking at it, sort of makes my point, in that, you know, getting 20 signatures really isn't all that difficult. And I can go to the senior center, too. I can go do it, and I can probably get signatures. I can have friends go and get signatures also. I can make copies of those sheets and have it done. It's not that difficult. It just isn't difficult. But it's a requirement. So if it's not difficult, but we're doing it, but what we do then is we give it to our clerk. And there's seven people running. So now the clerk's going to go through 210, because everybody's going to get, what, how many signatures and all that, she's going to go through each one of them, each one of the signatures, verify that they're, you know, they're legit and all of that. And it takes some staff time and whatnot in that respect. But the thing is, is that it's not difficult to get 20. And so, why have it? It's really kind of the point to do that. And Mayor Gabriel, you're correct, you know, back about the time when the charter was created, there was about 750 people here. Now there's 7,200, about a factor of 10, you know. So, yeah, about 200, if it's proportional to the number of people, I guess. I don't know that it's a linear thing, but the point is, is that, you know, you would be asking a lot more people to make it the same kind of commitment, I guess, as you did back in 1963 or '65, when the first election happened. But, so, I'm saying that, you know, I'm not saying that it's difficult to get, and it's not, but why do it if it's not necessary? And it also causes the clerk a lot more effort to do that. So with that, I'll pass.
I'll let Vice Mayor Navar speak next, since he's one of the co-sponsors. Vice Mayor Navar, do you want to add anything?
Sure. Thank you. To answer one of the questions that was thrown at Ms. Swerner, there has been insufficient signatures. And the clerk has actually, in one case that I'm familiar with, went back to that person and said, you need to get more signatures. At the, on the last day of filing, you might not be able to have the clerk with her time, and so on and so forth. Yet, when you turn your petition in early, you can. And so, sometimes the last minute, people might get back into town, and they might have been absent during the first part of the filing period, different things like that. As Councilman Naxted said, it's just a requirement that costs the city money. And like you said, in most cases, it's, you can get the 20 signatures, but it does hamper last-minute filings and all for 20 signatures, when really, the voters are going to decide with your name out there, and you talking to the voters and educating them, instead of having to rush out and get 20 signatures, and do go through the costs and the time at the clerk's office. And one of these times, there's going to be, they weren't filed correctly, or it wasn't on this website, and then they might challenge that, and you're all over something that's really not that big of a deal. If anything, like you said, if it was a big deal back then, and we can make the argument that it's a big deal today, then I would make the argument, we need to raise it to 200. And then, and then that really puts a burden and more work on the clerk also. But I would ask my council members to support this and put it in front of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterkin?
Well, as we've seen at a few of our meetings, well, I guess I shouldn't say that. There's people that might not be able to get 20 signatures. And I think that's not a bad thing.
Any other comments? Councilmember Petty?
I do think it's a big deal about going out and getting 20 signatures. It validates the commitment of the individual who is considering running for this city council. And it makes it such that someone has to think ahead, and that it's not a frivolous last-minute, oh, I think I'll run for city council, because I can see who all's on there, and I'll just wait to the very last moment, and just sneak in. So I think it's a very good process, and that eliminates some of the last-minute, not very serious individuals who wouldn't be taking this position in a serious manner.
Council, anybody, any other comments from council? So, this was one, I got to tell you, I'll be supporting this resolution, and I, only because of a lot of the comments that were made here, is that it's not that hard to do. You can go to the senior center, you can go to, you know, probably stand out in front of Safeway or any business in Kenai and get your signatures, you know, pretty quickly. And I've probably had people that have signed mine, as Ms. Swerner said. I mean, I've had people sign mine that may not have voted for me, they maybe weren't philosophically aligned with me, but they still signed the petition. I mean, I go out and try to do door-to-door, and when I'm campaigning anyway, so I know the importance of getting out there and talking to folks. There is that value, I think, that people can have the chance to ask you, you know, where you stand on particular issues, and that might be important for them. Although, like I said, there's times when you're running that they have that opportunity to call or email, or hit you up on the door-to-door thing. As far as having skin in the game, you still have to, you know, file, and you still have to register with APOC. You know, there's, you know, as far as making the commitment to run, there is a commitment there. I just think that this is a little bit antiquated, and I guess to speak to Councilmember Peterkin, you know, saying that there's maybe 10, someone couldn't get, you know, the signatures to get on the ballot. Well, I guess if they got on the ballot, then they certainly wouldn't get elected if they couldn't get the signatures on there. So it's not that big of a deal. It's hard for me to imagine that anybody could get the required 20 signatures to get their name on the ballot. I think it's a little antiquated. In fact, when I first ran, I was told I had to get 20 signatures of a petition. And I, wow, I think I started laughing, like, really? 20 signatures? Because it wasn't that big of a deal. So it just, it's kind of a, it's not a deterrent, but it's, I don't know, maybe, I think it's just antiquated, my personal opinion. So I will be supporting this resolution. Any other comments from council? Seeing on clerk, please call her on.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Vice Mayor Navar?
Yes.
Councilmember Malloy?
No.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterkin?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up for folks here, that action we just took was to put it on the ballot, so those citizens of Kenai can weigh in on it. Next up, we have Resolution Number 2019-49, providing for the submission to qualified voters of the city of Kenai at the regular election of October 1st, 2019, the question of amending Section 10-2, three-year terms, election at large, nonpartisan elections, to provide that the terms of office of the mayor and other council members shall begin the Monday following the certification of the election. And this is sponsored by Vice Mayor Navar, pleasure of council. Vice Mayor Navar?
Yes, thank you. This one has...
We need to move it first, so if you...
Oh, go ahead.
...make the motion to...
Sure, I would move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-49.
Second.
Is that correct?
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution 2019-49? Seeing now, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Navar?
Thank you. As you can, if any of you have, well, all of you have, because you've taken your seat after you've won, or you've watched it as new council people, and even the mayor is elected, they have that clumsy situation where they have to call the meeting to order, and to be a quorum. The mayor, let's say the mayor's just been, an election's happened, and there's a new mayor, because the other mayor didn't run, or it might have been beat. But in our case, the last few have been because the mayor didn't run. And, but you have council people that have run, and had challengers, and lost, or whatever. But they have this clumsy, even for us that are sitting up there, we don't even get to say goodbye to the mayor, or have a take in the back of the room, or council people and say, hey, thanks, even if they're just leaving their term. Because we don't know who's elected and who's going to. But right after the, at the beginning of the meeting, after you qualify a quorum, and you certify the election, then you tell everybody to get up and leave their seat, and these other people to come. And to me, it makes it very tough to be prepared for that meeting. Not that the clerk doesn't submit all of that to you, or if you show up, or whatever, but also for the others and for the city, to be able to thank those people correctly at the end of that meeting, and they know they're going to be replaced on the Monday following. So if there's any questions, I'll certainly answer. But this one's a clear, straightforward, very cumbersome. This is the one I would like to see passed more than any of the others. So I would ask for your support.
Comments from council? I guess my question, question of the clerk, just for clarification, the council has certified the election, right?
Correct.
Okay. So once they certify the election, could they, if someone was not reelected, take action at that meeting on it? Or would the certification be at the end of the meeting?
We could move certification to later in the meeting. It could be an action, it's just an action approval item. And currently, it just is the first item.
So that would just move the term, that would just move the term so effective that, okay. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that. Okay. Bring it back to council. Any comments, deliberations from council? Councilmember Malloy?
So that sort of was my question, too, because it wasn't clear how this would be implemented. You know, I was going to ask if the clerk, if we were then having the clerk certify the election, you know, and it not be certified by council in between the first and the second meeting. But that's been clarified, that the council would still certify the election. You know, I haven't really seen this be a problem. You know, generally, the only one time that I recall, no, two times, in all the elections that I've certified, has somebody who's not been elected come to the, actually come to the meeting and vote on. And one was Councilmember Boyle, who voted against certification, if you recall that. And then, of course, it was like 6 to 1, and so he left, because he didn't get reelected, you know. And another was a council member, former council member, Joe Moore, simply because he wanted to say goodbye to everybody, not because he had to, you know, because we've never not had a quorum to do that. So I guess, you know, I don't really have, and, you know, a big issue with this, it's just that it would, I see it causing people maybe to have to come to the meeting. And maybe they wouldn't anyway, because they're not going to serve anymore, you know. Maybe they wouldn't come to the meeting anyway, even though we moved the certification to the end of it. So I don't know that this really addresses a problem that we have.
Any other comments from council, discussion? Well, that, I guess that's where I was at it, because their last, that would be their, if they weren't reelected, or they didn't run again, and they didn't plan to run again, that that would be their last official meeting, you know, to take. And if I recall, there's generally not a heavy agenda during those times. But I tend to agree with Vice Mayor Navar, that it can get kind of awkward, where you're sort of, you know, they're certified, and then they get up and leave, and then you swear, and then they take the seats, where, you know, they could just, you know, get through the agenda, move the certification to the end. So they feel like what they're deliberating on and voting on is still part of their official duties, because we always have the certification of the election at the very beginning of that meeting. They might have a sense of, well, I just certified that, I'm not on council anymore. You know, it might be a little bit awkward. But anyway, I do think that it addresses an interesting item. Councilmember Naxted?
Probably I shouldn't say anything, but since Mr. Malloy brought up Mr. Boyle, I beat him in that election, and I don't think he wanted to be here, and that's why he voted no, which was, by the way, inappropriate, considering the clerk had, at the time, certified the election, and was not an appropriate type of thing. But he was notably uncomfortable, and I was here. And his departure was quite obvious, too. So I think, in a way, if someone else is feeling that way, that it would provide some kind of a little bit of a buffer, if you will, to them. So maybe they wouldn't, you know, treat the newly-elected individual such.
Sorry. Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes, I will be supporting this resolution also. I just think it's a more elegant way of dealing with transference of authority within our... of dealing with the transference of authority within our council. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Navar?
Just to clarify, only I'm not sure if I heard correctly, but the election, our certification of the election wouldn't be required to happen at the end of the meeting, it could happen at the beginning. The code would be changed, as I understand it, for the charter, that you would take your seat the Monday following certification. So essentially, after, like, let's say today was the certification, then it wouldn't, you wouldn't take your new seat until the Monday following. And the other person would continue to serve until the next, until Sunday night at midnight, I guess you'd say. The clerk could still swear people in ahead of time, different things like that, in between the certification and their taking their seat on Monday. But the assembly does it this way. They certify the election for themselves and the school board and all the service areas, and different things like that. And the assembly doesn't take their seat till the Monday following certification. It's just a clean way of doing it. I think if I'm a council member, whether I'm running for reelection or not, I should come to that meeting, not because it's my last meeting, and I only get to get up there for 10 minutes to say I'm here, certify the election, and then get out of my seat, let the new person take the seat. You know, in some cases, you might even have to come clean out your area there a day ahead of time, or reach in there in that 10 minutes and do it. I just think it makes for a very clean process of when somebody's term starts, when it ends, and nobody feels uncomfortable completing their term as a council member or mayor by coming to their last meeting and being able to complete that meeting from beginning to end. Thank you.
This might be a question for Scott or Jamie, but does the charter speak to swearing in of new members, council members, as far as the mechanics of that?
No, it does, it just says that the clerk swears in the new.
Okay, so there's not a time thing in there. So presumably, you would be swearing in the new council members that Monday morning, after the certification meeting?
Yeah, I would contact the new, whoever was elected.
Or mayor or council.
And, yeah, ask them to come in that Monday for a swearing.
Okay.
Or as soon as they could make it after that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Navar?
Yes.
Councilmember Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now on Item D6, Resolution Number 29, 2019-50, awarding an agreement for the purchase of security cameras and softwares for the Public Safety Building and Security Camera Project. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Move for approval of Resolution 2019-50, request unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution 2019-50? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Unanimous consent was requested. Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Just a quick question. Where are these cameras going to be located, and do they include the cabins in Old Town?
Ms. Charles Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glenn Dunning, these are at the Public Safety Building, so Fire Department and Police Department only. They are not in the, at the cabins. Thank you.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection?
No objection.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Navar. Seeing none, Resolution Number 2019-50 is adopted. That brings the 7, Resolution Number 2019-51, awarding an agreement to furnish and deliver chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant and water treatment facility. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Move for approval, Resolution 2019-51, request unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2019-51? Seeing none, bring it back to council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection?
None.
Seeing none, Resolution Number 2019-51 is adopted. Since we have Resolution 2019-52, amending its comprehensive schedule of rates, charges, and fees to eliminate the ambulance fee for patient treatment without transport, requested by administration. Councilmember Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to approve Resolution Number 2019-52.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2019-52? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Peterkin?
Yeah, I read this last night in a packet, and I just kind of would like somebody to explain to me, just kind of, I read a lot of different stuff, but I just kind of want just the 10,000-foot view, like what we're talking about here.
Ms. Charles Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Peterkin. So, you know, this was a fee that was proposed as a part of the adoption of the 2020 budget. However, after we started looking at it, and it actually came up at a council meeting earlier, and Vice Mayor Navar had asked the question about how we were going to handle charity care, which currently, when we talk about ambulance service, when we actually transport to the hospital, if that individual qualifies for charity care, CPH, the hospital, will notify the City of Kena that they qualify for charity care, and that's the process that we use right now. So that's our existing charity care policy, is to rely on Central Peninsula Hospital to tell us that they qualify for charity care. And they'd go through a very extensive process to determine that, you know, including looking at the patient's income, their assets, credit history. And they go through an extensive process. We looked at what it would have taken for the city to go through, establish our own charity care procedures or policy, because in the case of a treat, without a transport, we wouldn't be able to rely on the hospital, because they're not involved in that circle of care. So the city would have had to have been required to establish our own charity care policy that we handled internally. And we didn't feel like, at this point, that it was probably warranted for us to establish our own policy based on the amount of revenues that we're going to be receiving. And then in addition to that, the other option was to not provide charity care at all, and we felt that that wasn't appropriate either.
Any other questions? I do, I want, what is BLS, non-emergency and emergency? Basically, is that basic?
Yes, Mayor Gabriel, that's basic life support and advanced life support.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, so the way that this works, someone has an issue at their house, they just need to be checked out, they dial appropriate number, 911, ambulance comes, and the medics will give them a once-over. And if it's a non-event, then there's no billing. Is that the way, this is the practical application of it?
Councilmember, I mean, sorry, Ms. Charles Turner?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Glenn Dunning, yeah. The way we currently operate that is the way it works. So if they're called, if they call 911, our medics show up on-site, and they provide some sort of basic support. Sometimes it goes as far as applying an IV. But if, in the end, transport is not provided, you know, the person elects not to be transported, the way it is currently, up through FY19, we didn't charge. FY20 budget, we had proposed charging for that, that if we showed up based on a 911 call and provided that immediate service, that we would be charging them for that. But again, once we looked at the charity care component, felt at this point, it probably doesn't make sense for us to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, I will be, I will be supporting this resolution. I think it's a more equitable way to interact with our citizens, especially if there's an issue where someone just needs assistance, needs another set of eyes. I wholeheartedly support this approach. It'll just, someone saying, well, I might want to go, I might need attention, but I don't want to pay the money. So they just sit there and stroke out or something. People make decisions like that. And I just, I just think, and perhaps know in my heart, that this is the correct moral way to do it.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Navar?
Thank you. I want to thank the administration for bringing this up. I don't normally do it. I almost did at the budget time, but people wouldn't have understood why I voted no. But I almost voted no, simply on that issue alone. But I did. But I'm glad they looked at it again. I was going to see how it worked this first year and do it. I had people come up to me and say exactly what Councilmember Glenn Dunning just spoke to, that if they call the ambulance, even if it's for one of their kids, because they're not sure, or whatever, and boom, it's a $250 bill, that becomes a real concern about whether they would call or not call, all because we have a $250 fee. And like, I remember asking the question of the fire chief, he said it didn't amount to a lot of those calls either. So I'm glad they looked at it. I'm just hoping that everybody supports this. I think it's a good reversal of actions that the administration looked at when they were looking at everything. And they took everything as a whole, but when this issue came up, it just was one more point that needed to be addressed. And I think it's a better way to go at this time. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection?
No objection.
Seeing none, Resolution Number 2019-52 is adopted. That brings us to Resolution Number 2019-53, authorizing the city manager to enter into a one-year agreement with the City of Sodana to provide animal shelter services for the City of Sodana at the Kena Animal Shelter, requested by administration. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
I move for approval of Resolution 2019-53.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2019-53? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, and open it up for Councilmember Naxted.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have the city manager discuss this, since it's a negotiation he's worked on.
Ms. Charles Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Naxted. So Stephanie Queen, the city manager from Sodana, approached me, I believe, in April, it's in my memo what date it was. But anyways, earlier this spring, she approached me about the possibility of the City of Kena taking over sheltering services for the City of Sodana. They've seen a significant reduction in the number of animals that they've sheltered in Sodana over the last four years, dropping to as low as, I believe, 105 animals during the last calendar year. And they felt that this is a possible, a possibility where we could collaborate together, both Kena and Sodana, provide some additional revenues for our shelter that we otherwise wouldn't see. It allows the City of Sodana to save some money by not providing sheltering. So we looked at it and started working through it. We went back and forth a couple of times on how we would quantify what the value of providing the services were. The $42,000 number that you see in front of you was based on a historical average of 150 animals coming from Sodana, and adding those 150 animals on the 830 animals that we received last year, figuring out what that percentage was, removing the lapse, removing $100,000 that's non-shelter costs that the city incurs, and then using that for the number of $42,000. You can also see that there's, that's a minimum amount that they will pay if, for some reason, the number of animals continue to increase or start to increase in Sodana. There is a $384 cost per animal if they exceed 150 animals during any year. This is also just for one year. It's really a pilot project to see how this works. I'm confident that it'll work fine, and it will be advantageous to both cities. But assuming that it is, that it does work well for a year, we'll look to extend it into a multi-year agreement after this year.
I do have a question. Ms. Charles Turner, do you anticipate increasing staff over there to cover additional work?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. No increase in staff is necessary. You know, actually, if you look at our historical numbers at the shelter, we're over 200 animals down where we were even four years ago. So we do not need to hire additional staff. We estimate that additional operational costs associated with this are going to be less than $5,000. I'm guessing it's going to be significantly less than $5,000. So no additional personnel and operational costs will be minimal.
Very good. Councilmember Glenn Dunning, your hand up.
Yeah, that answered my question. My question was going to be, do we have the surge capacity? And the city manager spoke to it very well. Thank you.
Thank you. So I presume that we'll have a report about a year, if this gets adopted, that we'd have a report and how that's working out?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, if it's working out well, you'll see something come forward, probably a little bit earlier than this, to look for an extension of that for a multiple-year contract. And at that time, we'll give you an update on how everything went, how many animals were received, what the total cost was for Sodana, if there were any operational impacts for us as well.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Petty?
So when the animals are brought in, the person that brings the animal in will indicate where they came from? Is that how it's going to be tracked?
Ms. Charles Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty. The City of Sodana is actually still going to have an animal control officer. So the City of Sodana animals will actually be brought to the shelter primarily, maybe exclusively, and Chief Ross could correct me if I'm wrong, but almost exclusively from either animal control from Sodana or from Sodana police officers, one of the two. So they're still going to be providing animal control services in Sodana, just not sheltering. So they'll still continue to, they're collecting some animals in the City of Sodana, they'll just be brought to Kena instead of be brought to their shelter.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor Navar, you okay?
Yes, I'm more than okay with supporting this resolution, and I think it's beholden upon us to make sure that we work with our sister city and the governments. As you know, we might even have some issues with water and sewer in the future, a number of other things. I think we should always try the options. If there are savings to both communities, and I think in this case, there are, I think it's beneficial to do it. And I look forward to furthering this partnership between the two cities and cutting costs of government to the citizens. Thank you.
Councilmember Naxted?
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2019-53 is adopted. Is there anybody that wants to, oh, Councilmember Peterkin? That's exactly what I was just going to ask. I'll see if people want to soldier on or take a break, and I guess that answers my question. We'll take a 10-minute at ease. take a break. And I guess that answers my question. We'll take a 10-minute at ease. Back on the record, next up, we have, we're under item G3, action approval, approving a special use permit of the use of the city dock crane. And I'll, if Councilmember Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to approve the special use permit for the use of the city dock that's proposed in the laydown that we received tonight.
I'd like to second that. Oops, sorry, Bob.
It didn't have the word crane, so I had to add the word crane. Sorry.
Very good. It's moved and seconded. And I don't, normally don't do this on action approval, but if the body doesn't have objection, I know we have a member of the audience who's spoke to us on, give them a chance to, if you'd like to speak to this, Mr. Chesick.
My name's David Chesick. I live on Calligan Island, well, about half the year. Been over there for 50 years, and I've used that dock for a lot of years. It's our connection to the infrastructure to get over here, to get all the things you need in a place like that. Well, there is a dock. It's a nice dock, and it's got cranes. And we tried to get big industry to make a deal and do something with it, but no one was interested. So, the question is, how can we, you know, use it? The dock is there. It's meant to be used. So, the project manager wants to use it. The city manager wants to use it. I think they talked to the city attorney, and they came up with a way, with an idea to start getting it utilized. But I think it works that you need to allow the city manager to make deals and qualify people so that it can be done. So, I'm here to ask that you do that. I'd like to see the dock in use. You know, some days, someday I'd like to see the fuel reestablished and maybe a fish market there and skip taxi. And there's a lot of things that that dock could be used for to enrich our community. So, if anyone is thinking that this isn't a good idea, I invite your questions. And if, I mean, I'm not going to belabor the point and repeat myself. I just ask that you allow your staff and your city workers to do what they want to do and go along with the proposal. Does anyone have any questions about it?
Any questions, Mr. Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yes. Thank you for coming to testify before us. I'm very much in favor of establishing once again that city dock. It's not a matter if you build it, they'll come. It's a matter if you repair it, they'll return. And I think, I think you and other like-minded individuals will be the beginning point of a, of a commercial venture that will, that will benefit not only the Fisher people, you know, in your community, but will allow access for some of these boutique processors that we do have here locally to have a quality fish and be able to provide the specialty market that they do. And don't be a stranger. Give us some feedback, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, at the first training, Peninsula Processing is going to have a few people there, and I'll be there. And the other people I met hanging down at the ramp were people who had bear viewing lodges who utilized that ramp in May, and they were very interested. And I think that once we start, you know, we'll iron out the details as we go and make it work. But, you know, once we start, there's going to be interest in a way that supports our local industries.
Thank you. Any other question? Councilmember Peterkin?
I'd just like to thank you for coming and being consistent. And I'm really glad we've got it to this point. And I hope we keep going farther. But I'm in favor of putting Paul in charge of this and allowing him to make good decisions and get our, get you guys doing what you need to do. Thanks.
Well, I'd like to thank Paul. Last year, the dock was closed because the city got left in a lurch when one of the big processors backed out. But he made some calls, and I got taken care of very well. And then I got to use the ramp all spring. So, I'm satisfied up until this point. And if we go forward and we turn the dock into a community asset, it's all good.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Navarro, are you okay?
I'm still with you, no problem.
Okay. Before we go any further, I know there's amended special use permit that was in the laydown from.
The motion was to approve that one.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering. Okay. Mr. Ostraner.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just wanted to make sure that I was very clear that this action approval is asking for authorization for the city manager to issue an unlimited number of the special use permits like this. And just for your information, the one change from the special use permit that was in the packet to the one that's in the laydown was actually under training. We've added one additional requirement that you finish online pedestal crane training. Actually, our street foreman completed it yesterday or the day before, I believe. And he thought it was a good additional amount of training that would probably increase some of the awareness that folks should have in operating around the crane and lower our liability as well. So, that was the only change in the special use permit was the addition of that requirement.
Thank you. So, I got a question, because I see on the permit that it runs till seasonal shutdown. So, is that, about what time is that generally? Because it was not, so, when you're proposing to write the permits for seasonal, it's a flat fee regardless of the amount of time that they use it. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. That's correct. And the seasonal closure varies somewhat, depends on weather, several other factors. But it's somewhere in that late September, October timeframe when we shut it down for the season.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yeah, just follow up on my previous comments. I've visited with several other individuals that I've been acquainted with over time who are in the oil industry. And they intimated that with some marketing and the ability to maybe use that crane at other than high slack, which limits you to about two and a half hours of worth, if it could be maybe a little more available, like dredging. I think we would see some more commercial activity there too, movement of materials, or maybe even to support the LNG thing. But talking about existing projects that are here in and about the Cook Inlet that involve water transport. Thank you.
Councilmember Malloy.
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Is there any objection to approval of the amended special use permit for use of city dock crane? Seeing none, that special use permit is, amended special use permit is approved. Next, that brings us to action approval, item four, delineation, delineate management authority for two properties in the Barron Park subdivision requested by administration. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to take action to approve, to delineate management authority for two properties in the Barron Park subdivision.
For a second.
I'll second it. I'm not really sure what's going on, but I'll second it to hear about it.
And I'll have Mr. Ostraner speak to this if he, once he gets a second here. But it was actually a pretty interesting read there in the packet regarding sort of the roadmap of how we got to where we're at now with those properties. And, Councilmember Malloy.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have a report from the city manager, an explanation, because I was unsure which, you know, management authority was for which tracks, you know, if the general fund still had management authority under some of the tracks and the subdivision proposal and everything. Thanks.
Mr. Ostraner, would you like to give us an overview of what you are recommending here?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. And I'll start out by saying that this has been an issue that's been longstanding. When I first came to the city, two and a half years ago, it was brought to my attention that this area was, needed some work. There was a lot of uncertainty about who was responsible for which parcels as far as the management authority and responsibility and liabilities associated with those parcels be with the airport fund or with the general fund. A lot of confusion with that. I have spent a significant amount of time working through this, trying to unravel everything that's happened on that parcel in the past, as well as Terry Eubank has done the same and Christine Cunningham. We've all looked at this at great length. And I will just tell you that it's, there's a lot of complexity here, a lot of things that have happened in the past. And depending on how you analyze all of these different things that have happened, you can create a scenario where it may require a transfer of some amount of money from the airport fund to the general fund, or you can go through the same analysis in a slightly different way and come up with a situation where it actually goes, has to go the opposite direction, where there's money from the airport to the general fund. So, it's really a complex issue that, from an administrative standpoint, what we really need is some certainty going forward so that we can establish which fund is responsible for which parcel. So, this action approval requests that tracks two and three, the fire training facility and the former UA lease. If you look at the exhibit that follows the memo, that those two now vest with management authority with the airport. So, right now, currently, everything technically is under the management authority of the general fund. This would transfer that from the general fund. This would transfer that from the general fund to the airport fund for those two parcels. One of the reasons why it's important to establish this is we need to know which fund receives the benefits associated with those properties. So if you take the example of the fire training facility on track two, any revenues generated from that facility would go to the airport fund if we establish them as the responsible fund for that parcel. Same thing goes for track three. If we were able to find a use for track three and lease that property, the revenues associated with that would then go to the airport. By the same token, any revenues generated from one, four, and five would go to the general fund, although with their current uses, I would anticipate that none of those will probably be revenue generating in the future. But again, what this asks is that the management authority for tracks two and three reside with the airport fund. This also allows us the ability to go forward and actually subdivide this properly so that that right-of-way, primarily so the right-of-way on the north that goes from Marathon Road into that cul-de-sac, we can dedicate that appropriately for any future use in that area. I'm sure there's other questions, and I probably missed some things in my report, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions council might have.
I do have a question regarding the Beacon facility. So if that was, would that fall in the management of the airport, then the Beacon facility would after this? So I know we have, like, the Red Crosses in there right now, that, how would they be treated?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. It would not have any impact on the Red Cross simply because the FAA deed restrictions have already been satisfied for all of this property. When the general fund originally paid the airport fund the $212,000 back in the 90s, so, or maybe it was in the 2000s, but the FAA deed restrictions have been satisfied for this, so there's no requirement that those properties, for example, Red Cross, be rented at fair market value.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Ostraner? Couple of people scrambling for the light there. Councilmember Malloy?
Sure. Not really a question. I guess I do support, you know, this concept and where we're going for this. My concern was it wasn't, it hadn't been clear to me in the memo that general fund authority would be retained, for example, the city shop, and I was concerned about that because the reason that we moved the city shop there was so they wouldn't have, general fund wouldn't have to make lease payments to the airport, but the managers answered that concern. My other concern is really just technical. I guess my preference would have been a resolution, you know, outlining all this because it's easier to track in the future what happened than a motion and discussion at council. You know, as the city manager pointed out, it is a, there is a complicated history to it, but anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Naxted?
I agree with Mr. Malloy that some sort of a resolution, or maybe a couple of resolutions, might be in order to kind of help simplify what, moving forward, is the, we've got the history now, and it's quite long, but it doesn't include a lot of information in there. If there's going to be a subdivision, who's going to pay for it and what it's going to be, or how that's going to come about. I guess I, you know, I would think that, you know, tracking it like Mr. Malloy said, that would be a good way to handle, you know, each parcel perhaps and what, and how the subdivision is going to happen, and who's going to pay for what and how much that's going to be. I guess the other question that I had in addition would be, there was talk about revenue that the airport would get from the fire training facility, and I'm kind of curious if there is any revenue from the fire training facility above the cost of all those buildings and maintenance and all of that at the airport. So if the airport's getting it, doesn't the city want to keep it if it's making a whole bunch of revenue? But if we're going to give it to the airport, we want to make sure that they're being handed something that not only has potential, but that is actually making money.
Ms. Ostraner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember next. The fire training facility, as far as I know, has never been profitable. However, we are in the process of designing with FAA dollars the complete redesign and rebuild of that fire training facility, and I've been in discussions with Beacon, who now operates that facility, that the agreement between the city and Beacon almost certainly needs to be renegotiated once that's completed. So I would anticipate that going forward, there is a possibility that that could be a revenue generator, but in my knowledge, it's never generated money for the city, at least not to any extent.
Councilmember Malloy?
Follow-up question to that. So if that's renovated and there's, you know, increased lease payments or whatever, those lease payments, do they go into the regular airport fund for operations, or do they go into the permanent fund? You know, like, are we going to have a benefit from being able to spend that money or, you know, for support airport operations rather than it going into the permanent fund?
Ms. Ostraner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Malloy, the lease payments associated with that facility or the revenues associated that, from that facility, would be available for operations at the airport.
Thank you.
Councilmember Glendening?
We're talking about the Beacon facility, correct?
Correct. I guess I got a question. Would there be a replod on this to reflect the road there between three and four? Or is that an overlay? I mean, Ms. Ostraner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, that's one of the things that we definitely want to pursue once we get management authority clarified for these parcels, is that what is now a common lot line between track three and track four would become a dedicated right-of-way, likely 60 feet wide. There are utilities that run down on the side of the road right now that would be encompassed by that right-of-way as well.
Very good. Councilmember Petty?
So, for my clarity, so the city, from their general fund, paid the airport for tracks two and three? Is that what I understood you to say, sir?
Ms. Ostraner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Actually, the general fund paid for the entire 40 acres.
Which is, that tracks one through five?
The entire area, they paid, and I'm looking at the memo here to find out the date on that. 1991, the general fund paid $212,500 to the airport fund, and that was the fair market value of that parcel at the time. So that is the payment that actually satisfied the FAA deed restrictions, and that the airport fund got compensated the full fair market value of that 40 acres at that time.
So that 40 acres currently belongs to the city?
Ms. Ostraner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty, yes, it belongs to the city and currently is under, the management authority resides with the general fund for the entire area.
For the entire area. So what would be the rationale and thought process to give the profits back over to the airport and not go back into the general fund?
Ms. Ostraner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty, that's where the story gets really complicated and complex. If you'll see that, once the general fund purchased or paid for that $212,500, at that point, the University of Alaska Anchorage entered a lease on that 40 acres. As a part of that lease, they did construct the improvements that are on the now track three, but the University of Alaska Anchorage wanted out of that lease once their development didn't meet their operational needs, or whatever reason they wanted out of it. At that time, the airport paid $325,000 to get, to get the University of Alaska Anchorage out of that lease and to buy the improvements on track three. To add to the confusion, the airport fund normally provides repairs and maintenance on the Beacon facility, but in 2008, the general fund authorized $110,000 to pay for maintenance on that facility, because apparently at the time, the airport fund balance was not sufficient enough to do those, do that maintenance, so the general fund actually subsidized the airport fund to make those payments. Like I said, there's a lot of different things that have gone in on here. Another example is when utilities were brought into these tracks to, you know, there's water and sewer that comes in there and provides water and sewer services to both the Beacon facility and to the city shop. The general fund paid for those improvements at that time. So there's been a lot of back and forth over the years, and again, depending on which approach you take, you could probably make an argument that the airport fund owes the general fund something, but you can very, just as equally easy, make the argument that it should go the other way, that the general fund should be paying the airport fund. In the end, because the history was so complex and it was difficult to quantify which way those transfer funds should occur, we felt it was best just to clear up the management authority so that administration going forward could manage these effectively and, you know, without making any exchange of funds.
Any other? Councilmember Malloy?
So, I guess, you know, I don't, I don't know if, in my mind, the motion is a little vague. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud. That's why, you know, in addition to the tracking thing, why I was talking about, you know, a resolution on the subject, but I guess what we're doing here, the motion, is to designate management authority on two properties, which I guess are, you know, those track three and track two specifically, you know, because we're talking about changing the management authority to airport. And I guess by default, that leaves management authority on one, four, and five with the general fund. I don't know, is it time sensitive? Like, could we have a resolution in August, you know, our first meeting in August that is real clear on it? Or, I don't know, I'm just...
Ms. Ostraner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Malloy, this problem has existed for 20 years, so no, it's not time sensitive. We can certainly come back to a resolution if that makes council more comfortable, and then have that discussion again. I'm more than happy to do that.
Then, that would be my preferred course of action so that I would clearly understand what I'm voting on. So if, with the consent of the section, second, I withdraw my motion with the understanding that there would be a resolution in our August meeting packet.
I concur.
Okay. So the, yes, Vice Mayor Navarre?
Yeah, I certainly don't have a problem with this discussion, but I would be more comfortable to postpone this action than to withdraw it, because I don't know what happens to this. You're still going to have it there, and it might be the preferred action, although I don't have a problem with the resolution if the resolution comes back at the next But anyway, and the other is a point of order that we've really got into this by this point, and this motion is now the body, not the maker or the second. So I would rather move to postpone. I think that's the correct motion.
Well, I think we're okay with him withdrawing his motion with concurrence of the second. So basically, this is an action approval item, so the action we took was to give direction to the city administration to bring back a resolution at our next meeting. Councilmember Malloy?
I could make that motion. I'd move to direct the city manager to bring back a resolution or resolutions, you know, to delineate the authority on the specific tracks, you know, and whatever else he needs at the first meeting in August.
Does that satisfy, satisfy you, Vice Mayor Navarre?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I guess it's on the floor right now. So, Councilmember Glendening, that's what's on the floor right now. I'm sorry, I should have jumped the gun on that. Councilmember Glendening?
Yeah, I think a resolution would bring clarity to the convoluted history that's been exhibited so far in our discussion tonight, and maybe even bifurcated, have two resolutions. One, for the subdivision to allow for the right-of-way, and then secondly, a resolution to give clarity as to why the airport would require management authority over two fire training facilities. I would just like to see that approach, and I know you'll be thoughtful and thorough, and I can bide my time and wait for the resolutions to come forward. Thank you.
Councilmember, I mean, Ms. Ostraner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So, just so I'm clear in what my intentions would be, would be to bring back a resolution, potentially two resolutions if needed. As far as providing additional clarification on the convoluted history of it, I'm not sure the resolution is going to be able to provide a lot of additional clarity in that aspect, but what I can assure you is that the resolution will make the action of the council in the sections of the resolution much clearer, and that exactly what that resolution is accomplishing. Whereas in this action approval item, if you look at the last paragraph, it probably should have been clearer on exactly what administration was asking for, and the resolution will be very clear that, you know, in section one, that this is occurring. So it'll clarify that. As far as shedding more light on the complexity or the convoluted history, I'm not sure I can provide much more than what I provided in the memo here, unless there are specific things in here that council can point to where it's not clear that I can clarify. And again, that would likely be in the memo associating the resolution, probably be very similar to this, not necessarily in the resolution itself.
Thank you, and I appreciate that approach, and a resolution would enable us to track it historically going forward. In other words, we would, with this, we would set a baseline for these five properties and would have a clear understanding of what council and management intent is for these properties, and I believe this would be a better path forward, the resolutions that Counselor Malloy suggested. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
I had a...
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Councilmember next then.
I just wanted to chime in that, you know, unless there's a good reason to have just one resolution, since there's two parcels, I'd prefer to have similar functions, but they're separate properties, to have two resolutions. But I do believe that track three will not be track three eventually, because if you create a right-of-way there, it's a subdivision, so it'd probably become track something else. So it would need to be tracked in ways so it can be, you know, go back. But anyway, I still think that rather than doing one resolution, that at least two would be, would be clearer. There's the fire training facility, that's what it says over track two. That's what that unit is. And then we go up to track three, it says former UAA lease, which we might call something else, I don't know, but they are distinctly different. They just happen to be in the same region.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Glendening?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterkin?
Yeah.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Navarre?
Yes.
Councilmember Malloy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up, we have action, under action approval confirmation of mayoral nomination of the Parks and Recreation Commission, sponsored by myself. Councilmember next then.
Sorry, I was just catching up here. I move to approve the appointment of Tia Winger to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Second, and ask unanimous, please.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, unanimous consent is requested. Is there any objection? Vice Mayor Navarre, are you okay with that?
No objection.
Thank you, council. Next, we have a discussion, parks, city parks' hours of operation for the property, this is a discussion item, city parks' hours of operation for the protection of city properties, city resources, and residential neighborhoods. Ms. Ostraner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So if you look at the memo on page 83, you know, administration has been discussing and is considering limiting the operating... has been discussing and is considering limiting the operating hours for our local parks. What's presented here is city recommendation of limiting them from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., so they'd essentially be closed from midnight to 5:00 a.m. And this is, there's multiple reasons why this makes sense. We're seeing an increased number of needles and drug paraphernalia in the city parks, and much of that activity, or at least some of that activity, is occurring in those hours after midnight and before 5:00 a.m. Many of our parks are also located next to residential neighborhoods, which we've received noise complaints from neighbors about utilization of parks late into the night. We think that closing the parks will protect our park assets and improve the public safety. As you see here, it was discussed once in 2013, but it was isolated to a couple of separate parks. We think that applying this across all areas actually makes it, makes more sense. You'll also see that communities around us and other communities in Alaska, most of them have hours of closure for their parks. So we think this makes a lot of sense to close the parks during this time period. This is something that administratively, we could have instituted, but I felt that it was appropriate, particularly because it'd been discussed before in 2013, to bring it to council, and just have a general discussion with council about this, to make sure that the council was also supportive of this move. Thank you.
Councilmember Nextet?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to give a Parks and Rec Commission work session a report at this point, since they had a meeting on June 27th at 6:00 o'clock here in Chambers to discuss this issue, and this issue only. Chief Ross was there as well, and Bob Frates and the commission. And they were in full support of this. They felt that it was a good tool for our police. It was reported by Chief Ross that most of the problems they have, generally, not necessarily in parks, is between 11:00 at night and 3:00 in the morning, seems to be a pretty active time. And that, you know, if there's a car parked there, and it's, you know, they have, they have, you know, a reason to ask people to, you know, to move on or something like that. Otherwise, it could be a junk vehicle, and it could stay there for weeks, if not months, they wouldn't know. And also, if the public were to suspect some kind of activity going on, and they received a complaint, you know, they would respond to that. But anyway, they looked at it as a good tool. They had suggested perhaps an evening time of 11:00. But they weren't really real firm on that, you know, for closing of the park. Then the discussion kind of went on a little more on the parks that are listed, and those are, in fact, parks. But there are non-park parks that the city has that Parks maintains. And, you know, one might be the Green Strip out the airport, there's a gazebo there in that area. Another one might be the soccer field north. The softball fields also that are kind of associated in there. There was, and then Millennium Square also, that general area specifically. And it was, my understanding was felt that those, though they're not parks per se, that they kind of fall into this concept anyway, and should be included.
Councilmember Glendening?
Would it be fair to ask that all city properties be included in this discussion? Would that be a more encompassing approach, and give more tools for this type of management of activity?
I'm just, you know, running through my mind. I know, you know, like the multi-use purpose facility, you know, they run that. I think in the wintertime, there's longer hours there, that kids are out there skating around. What's that?
See, it could be by exception. I'm just thinking of the...
But I think, I mean, it's all, I think what the administration is looking for is direction here. So, you know, we could throw your thoughts on that, and have him bring something back if he wants. You know, it might be, it's sort of like, you know, accidentally, you know, trying to think of all the different scenarios, it might be worth, as far as adding to that. A little time, or...
Mayor?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Navarro.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to addressing some concerns. I guess I'd like to see a damage report in what parks they actually do. As you know, I have concern with not allowing any of our homeless families to use a bathroom at one of our parks. If you don't do it there, you're pushing them out into the business sector, whether it be 24-hour gas stations or other things like that. When in fact, I guess I'd like to know, you know, what the damage. I know we have needle problem. I can tell you, people on public property all over have the same issue. So I certainly would like to have more of a discussion on this, and talk about impacts. And, you know, when you make one action, you create another issue. And if the council wishes, they can do it, but I'm not for just a blanket, shut them all down, and essentially, the police, when they come across a homeless family parked in a parking lot, just so they're close to a bathroom for their kids, they get shooed out of there, and there's no place for them to even utilize within the city during those hours. And if that's the choice of the council, that's fine, but that's not my choice. Because when you're dealing with vandalism, you're also dealing with impacts to the homeless and everything else. So, those are my comments. I hope we don't take action tonight, and I hope we have something back as a whole, and address the whole issue as a problem, than just dealing with one aspect. Thanks.
And, go ahead, Councilman Malloy.
Thank you.
What's all my comments?
You know, I don't have an issue with this, you know, really, as a concept. I share some of Vice Mayor Navarro's concerns. I wouldn't want to expand it tonight beyond what the administration has asked for, because of unattended consequences that we don't know about, you know, for other properties. And we don't have a recommendation on that. I do have a question, you know, and maybe this has to do with exceptions or whatever, but the memo says Cunningham Park, special provisions may apply. And so just to, you know, the city manager, what does that mean?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Malloy. The one thing we were concerned about with Cunningham Park is people that are fishing down on the river oftentimes go start fishing prior to 5:00 a.m., and sometimes they go beyond 1:00 a.m. So, you know, the intended use of that park is river access. The intended use of that park is so folks can get down there and fish. So I think that in most cases, you could shut down these parks between midnight and 5:00 a.m., and really not impact the intended use of the park at all. But in the case of Cunningham, there's probably some special provisions that would need to apply, and that maybe we modify those hours a little bit to accommodate for what is, in fact, the intended use of that park, maybe slightly later or early in the day.
I presume that would be seasonal?
Yes.
Councilman Malloy?
So, to follow up, would that be, you know, something that administration would do, and there would be like an internet posting or whatever, posting relating to hours of operations? Or would that be left to the discretion of KPD, for example, in how they're gonna enforce this?
Mr. Ostrander?
Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Malloy, this is something that we would make sure that we posted online if there were hours of closure. And I could probably defer to Mr. Frates as far as how easy this would be, but I would think that the parks themselves would also be posted. So if Cunningham Park was seasonally closed from midnight to 5:00, that would be on the sign. But if during the summer months, when there was a lot of light and people might be down there fishing, it would be open, and that would also be posted at the park.
So it wouldn't be KPD discretion?
No.
Councilman Peterkin?
Yeah, I got a whole list of things. So, on the, just the discussion here, it says protection of city property and residential neighborhoods. So we're just talking about parks, not the neighborhoods themselves?
Just the parks, yes.
Okay. And then, I'm just thinking of my kids. They go out and golf, like, when the golf course closes, because they really love to go out there late at night. So I don't know if that would be included or not. And then I would like to see it midnight instead of 11:00, because I think a lot of kids that are still teenagers go out till at least midnight. And I think we absolutely should exclude the multi-purpose facility, because shinny hockey goes till about 2:00 in the morning, and a lot of kids use that. And it's, I mean, it's a good thing to be doing instead of other things. And the other thing, I guess, I had a meeting here about a year ago at McDonald's about 5:00 in the morning, and I was shocked at how many pretty much homeless people come in there and got their kids ready for school in the morning at the Kenai McDonald's. And I talked to a friend of mine who works for the school district, and she said there's like over 200 or 300 kids in our school district that are considered homeless, and it basically meant the place that they didn't have to go to, and they lived in a car or somewhere else. So we really do need to think about this, because if they can't go on the public, then they're gonna go to the businesses and other places. And so we just gotta put a lot of thought in this. I think maybe even a work session or something, but I think this, I'd like to participate. It could be good.
Yeah, and that was what I was gonna comment on, was Mr. Ostrander and I had a pretty lengthy conversation about this, and thought it might be appropriate to have a work session to talk about that, you know, about some of these things, and how they're treated. I don't think they're mistreated in our town. And this is something that a lot of, you know, cities and towns are coping with. Solana is the same way. I think that's a separate issue. On the other hand, I do know that there's some nefarious activities that are taking place during these times of operation. And it's disheartening to me when I hear my daughter saying that she doesn't want to take her grandkids to a park for fear of, you know, getting, because of, you know, needles that have popped up. So, you know, I think, you know, there's sort of aggression here. I think we need to work through, and maybe this is the first step right here, is to say, okay, let's, because honestly, at 1:00 in the morning, I think, like Fourth Avenue Park, there's probably not too many parents out there playing in the park on the jungle gym with their kids. That, you know, they wouldn't be doing that. So, anyway, any other comments? Councilmember Petty?
I appreciate the city manager bringing this to our attention, and I know that community members have been concerned about bad behavior that is happening in the parks after hours, and it makes our neighborhoods less safe. And so, any places that I have been, there have been hours posted for when the parks are available. And so I think this is in the right step with which to protect our community members alongside of our, and individuals who happen to be in our community that are currently homeless. And I want to work such that our city provides opportunities so that we don't have homeless in our community, not because we are heartless, but because there's ample opportunity, and there's not any need for anyone to be homeless. So I want to, I think that this is a step forward to solving problems in our community and addressing those. And we don't have to have a complete holistic picture in order to move forward, to do something with which to protect things now. We can do something. Thank you.
Councilmember Glendening?
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes. Hang on, I got Councilmember Glendening up, and then you're up next.
Yes, I support the idea of a work session, and be all things considered. We have properties in our inventory that are not necessarily parks, but that sometimes are treated like that. Millennium Square comes to mind. And if we could, with a, how can we say, a rational analysis by city management, perhaps come up with a menu of properties, and perhaps suggestions, and maybe one size doesn't fit all. But I certainly would be agreeable to a work session on this topic. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Navarro?
Thank you. I too am open to a work session, and I just want to say, because I hear comments, that the homeless are not the ones that use needles and break things and vandalize. And just like fishermen getting a special provision, the parks are used by a number of people. Most of the time during the day, I was, I did a job inspect the other day, I was amazed at how many people are playing in the water and enjoying it. And I too want to create, say, farts. And one of the ways is to have a needle collection. You know, there's people that use needles for medical reasons, and then those illegal uses. But we've got to look at everything as a whole. And like I said, this list only includes the parks, and it doesn't include, to me, you know, special provisions if there was a need for a late-night little get-together. And like you said, job inspect isn't around any immediate houses, or creates a noise issue where others have more of a noise issue. But for us to just look at this, because of what other cities, if just from your own list alone, it shows different hours of operation, and I'm sure there's provisions in some of those cities also. I don't know what all the answers are, but, you know, sometimes you've got to speak up for the minority, and so that they have a voice. And I take this as no, you know, that the city doesn't look at the homeless issue, because it isn't going away anytime soon. I too, like Councilmember Petty, I would love to see it gone. The only way that happens is by everybody working together and finding solutions. So, when were you thinking of instituting this, by the way, and were you given a 30-day notice or a 90-day notice? What was your, if this was to have gone forward, what was your intent? To start it tomorrow?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Navarro. No, it wasn't, we didn't intend to start it tomorrow. We would probably roll this out over a 30-day period, is what we had discussed previously.
I kind of think we're overthinking this right now. I, you know, a work session, I'm happy to go to a work session. I don't know that a work session is needed right now. But just backing up a little bit, certainly if somebody wanted to have a function into the night or something, or beyond these hours, a simple permit would be acquired from the parks, from the city. And that was discussed at the Parks and Rec meeting as well. So that really is not a problem. But what this does do is it does help provide the police a tool to help protect the neighborhood near... provide the, the police a tool, um, to help protect the neighborhood near, uh, some of these parks. And, you know, I, I, I think that maybe some, uh, uh, additional locations may need to be added, but I really don't have a problem with the, uh, the parks that are listed in the memo here. And I think, um, the city manager should, should move ahead and, uh, and do that. And I, I know that the, you know, it's, it, the, the police will, um, then be able to, um, do what they need to do and, uh, and handle, uh, any situations like that. It really isn't, this isn't really a homeless, uh, it's about the homeless. Uh, there, there could be, you know, the, the police are going to handle that. There's, there's a whole lot of other things that do happen in our city at night. And, and this just is going to allow the police to, to, uh, to, uh, appropriately deal with that. So I, I just don't have a problem with the city manager moving ahead with this as, as stated. And, uh, um, if, if we need to add some more to it, perhaps that's something the city manager will come forth with us then.
So I've seen a non, uh, council, or Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Actually, similar to what Councilmember Naxted just stated, you know, when we, when we brought this forward, it, I, I don't think administration saw this as, as a homeless issue. This is a, this is a park management issue and, you know, this is responsible management of our parks, similar to what you see across the country. Um, and it really encourages the intended use of the park without having folks in the park after hours that are using it for other purposes that are not the intended use. Um, you know, and as far as the work session goes, I think it's, it's a valuable thing to do, but I, it's my understanding with the work session would be to look at the homeless issue, um, in our community and, and try to figure out how we wanna approach that as a community. And I s- I do see this as a separate thing. This is, this is about managing our parks in a responsible way. Um, and then to address Councilmember Peterkin's questions, you know, the multi-use facility, uh, is not listed on here and either is the, is the golf course. So neither one of those would be covered by this. It's just those listed parks that are, that are in the memo. Thank you.
Um, so I gue- I guess at this point, uh, this is, it's a discussion on him, as, as Mr. Ostr- Ostrander had mentioned, uh, to, to start with, um, that, you know, administratively he can do this. He just wants to have a discussion. I'm, I'm, I'm kinda sensing consensus in this regard to, um, to, uh, limit the hours as proposed, outlined and, uh, and move forward on other issues later. Is that, uh, Mr. Peterkin?
What I'm reading this, my, some reason my, I legislate, didn't pull up the meeting tonight, but, uh, Jim gave me his. Thank you, Jim. Uh, what are the hours we're proposing?
Uh, Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Peterkin, uh, they'd be limited from, so the park would open at 5:00 AM and close at midnight.
Okay. And then just one that I saw on the list that probably is okay, but I, I live on Lawton and, um, sometimes it's, you know, it stays light out pretty late and I see kids that are legit, that are playing disc golf. But, you know, I also see a lot of suspect cars parked there too. So, um, I don't know, that might be one in the future we might look at, that, that if the kids are out late at night playing disc golf, maybe don't arrest them after midnight or something.
They have to show their scorecard to not get arrested? Is that, okay. Um, Councilmember Malloy?
Yeah, just a quick question to administration about, uh, the comment, um, on, uh, being able to get a, you know, like a, a permit for after midnight is, would this prohibit that? Because there's, uh, you know, a, a, a thing that the parks are closed. Or would someone be able to do that, some group or something, if they had a reason? Or would that, would you still have that flexibility to decide that on a case-by-case basis or whatever?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Malloy. Yeah, we would wanna reserve that ability to, to provide that opportunity if people wanted to use it after hours. I mean, we do provide something similar. We, we provide camping permits occasionally for, uh, you know, the Boy Scouts or something that wanna camp. You know, we provide that. It would be similar in this situation. If someone wanted to have it for legitimate reason during those hours, we'd wanna have the ability to allow it.
Everybody seem comfortable with where we're at now? Notting a pass?
No.
Vice Mayor Navarre?
Yeah, I'm very uncomfortable. I mean, I, like you said, you're just talking about a bunch of different ideas and nothing's in concrete. And I, I'd like to know where the administration gets the authority to do it, uh, after it's been a longstanding practice and they can just unilaterally, uh, say they got the authority to do it. Uh, and like I said, I, I would like to get a, a, a report. I haven't seen one since I've been on the council for seven years about all the damage and vandalism and everything that's happening in all our parks. Now, I certainly have heard from community members about late night, you know, activity and, and music, uh, but I can, uh, but I can tell you, the drug problem isn't going away by closing our parks. Uh, and, uh, you just push it off into the public sector. So they get to have all the needles and everything else on their property. Uh, you, we still have the South Beach and the North Beach and I can tell you there's needles there. I can tell you all over the place. So what I would like to know is, uh, get a, I'd like to have a report on the vandalism, whether you move forward on this or not. I'm making a request as a councilperson to submit me a, a whole vandalism list of city property.
Uh, Councilmember Peterkin.
And I don't think it should start in 30 days. I, you know, I, I think it's a terrible way to start it. Uh, and, uh, you're not addressing a problem, you're reacting and, and moving. And I'm, I'm not a bit happy. Thanks.
Hey, Tim, it's Robert. Um, Mayor Gabriel gave me the turn here. So, um, I, I can see where you're coming from, but I also think that we gotta take a few steps in the right direction. And I, I kinda feel like the, um, and I'm addressing this to all the council, not just to me, but, um, and the public. But, um, I really feel like this is a step in the right direction. Cause if an officer pulls up and, uh, he needs the ability to, if there's a suspect car or whatever and, and bad stuff's going on, they need to be able to say, hey, what are you doing here? You know, this park's closed and, um, and then ma- and maybe there's a legit reason why the guy's there or maybe not. But it gives them, I'd like to have them have the ability to, or some ability to just pull in and say, hey, what's going on and why are you parked here? And it might, it might solve some of the problem. It might push a lot of the problem to the, to the other parks. I know I've talked to Ron Hyde and there's tons of needles down the beach and he's picking them up all the time. And, you know, and, and I, I, I think that we have a huge problem here to deal with. And I think that this is a small step. I, I don't think it's the answer to the step, but I think it gives our police, I mean, we heard a lady tonight crying out for help because of all the drug activity. And she was very emotional, but it was like, we all know, we all drive down our street at night and see it. And we have to start somewhere. And I, I believe that, I don't know, Tim, if this is the right start, but I think it's a start. And, um, if we're just giving our officers the ability to just say, what are, what are you doing here? Or the, the ability to pull up to a parked car at three in the morning and say, why are you parked here? Or this park's closed and, and then they might, might be able to take one drug person off the street. Who knows?
Well, and at some level, I think we're conflating homeless people with drug users. And I think the, the, the target here is to, is to try to rein in the drug, the people that are using the parks as, uh, you know, places to use drugs and leave needles and things like that. So, you know, I think we can accomplish both here, but the, what, what I'm understanding is by not having some rules in place, our, our police department is somewhat hamstrung in their ability to even make a contact with, hey, what are you doing here at three in the morning? And I think that's legit question of somebody who's in our parks. I, you know, when I'm hearing my daughter say that she doesn't wanna use a park because of, of needles, that's not acceptable to me. So I think we gotta start somewhere. Councilmember Naxted.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree, uh, with that. And, and I, and I guess just to make it clearer, clearer of our overall intent, I, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that the council concurs with the city manager's memo, uh, regarding the particular parks and the hours of, uh, operation, which will be, um, uh, for those parks between the hours of 5:00 AM and midnight.
I'll second.
So there's now an official motion on the floor. Um, discussion on the motion. Councilmember Malloy?
I'd like to amend the motion to add a special provisions may apply to Cunningham Park. I would move to amend to that.
Yeah, I think that was part, wasn't that your part, your original memo?
It, it says, "Special provisions may apply." Well, may, may.
Well, I, I concur to that, that amendment to my motion. I'll just, just identifying that that's there.
Was there a second to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. So now we have any discussion on the, uh, on the amended motion. Councilmember, uh, Glendening?
Yes, I agree with you, Mayor. This is a good, a good starting point and will give our, uh, administration, uh, a tool to, uh, to manage, uh, public properties, uh, in a way that's beneficial to society and, and the safety and, and the security of all involved. Users of the park, uh, maybe someone, uh, is there, uh, maybe needs help. We, we don't know, but it will at least give the opportunity, uh, for, for our public servants to inquire as to, uh, as to the, the situation. Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Peterkin?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I don't think it's gonna solve the problem of needles in, in these parks, but I think it'll help a lot. But I, um, have a question. What is there, it doesn't really cover what happens if you're in the park after midnight. Like what, what, uh, what, what, is there a fine or a?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Peterkin. I'd actually like Chief Ross to talk about that. If you, if an officer makes contact with an individual after hours in the park, how that would be handled?
Chief Ross?
Uh, Mayor Gabriel, counsel, I would say that, you know, if they're in the park after hours, an officer would contact them and, and let them know it was closed and ask them to leave would probably be 99% of the contacts that were made there.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess we're, we're not gonna be hauling people to jail for, or fining them. Um, well.
Yeah, Mayor Gabriel, uh, so I, there, there's nothing in this, uh, discussion that makes it part of code as far as fining them. Uh, they could be considered trespassing if they were asked to leave and didn't leave. That, that would probably be that 1%, you know, that, uh, uh, when I said 99% would comply, most people when the police arrive and say the park's closed and you need to leave are going to just comply and, and go somewhere else if they don't want contact with the police.
I guess my next question would be, would there be, um, do you anticipate, you know, as a follow-up, a referral to someone who's maybe homeless and, 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 and doesn't have anywhere else to go?
Mayor Gabriel, so, you know, our officers deal with the homeless on a regular basis. Not that, not that this in particular issue is necessarily a homeless issue, but, uh, trying to make those referrals and help them get into services is very common. The officers get people in touch with Love Inc. and Salvation Army and, and the Friendship Mission and, uh, Freedom Houses and, and try very hard when people want help from us to, to get them those resources if, if they're willing to take them.
Very good. So there is some compassion on the part of the police department as, as opposed of their, their well-being beyond just, hey, you need to get out of the park?
Sir, Mayor Gabriel, certainly. Yeah, I think, uh, officers probably more than most deal with many of the homeless in a very positive manner. And, and those who are, uh, temporarily or in long-term out of housing, I, there's probably a number of officers, including myself, who have bought meals for folks that were hungry and, uh, didn't have other options and spent countless hours helping them find a place to be, uh, especially on cold nights.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments from council? Vice Mayor Navarre?
Yeah. I would make a motion, amendment to the motion to, uh, allow the homeless to use the parks between the hours of, uh, of the exclusion. So in other words, they don't have to be told to move along. They must be able to define homeless somehow, but for the police.
Do we have a definition of homeless in our code, Mr.?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Gabriel. We don't have a definition of homeless and I'm not sure how.
I'm sorry, I kinda jumped again. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that? Uh, that dies for lack of a second. Vice Mayor Navarre. So we're back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Glendening?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Navarre?
No.
Councilmember Malloy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to, uh, commission committee reports, uh, council on aging.
Uh, the July 11th meeting has been canceled.
Thank you. As we go through, there's, I'm gonna try to, if we can't kind of, if at all possible, let's expedite here. I know it's, it's 4th of July tomorrow and, and it's a beautiful evening and so, um, airport commission.
Our, our next meeting is July 11th.
Thank you. Harbor commission.
Um, we, I haven't met since the last meeting and aren't meeting again. Next meeting's in August.
Thank you. Uh, Parks and Recreation Commission.
Uh, no report. Next parks meeting is, uh, the 1st of August.
Thank you. Planning and zoning?
Um, the work session on the Sign Code that, uh, for Tuesday, June 25th was canceled. Um, the work session is going to be Tuesday, August 27th at 6:00 PM on the Sign Code. Um, the July 10th meeting is canceled. The next meeting is gonna be July 24th. At the meeting of June 26th, um, there was one item, two items on the agenda. One was a resolution to, uh, approve an application for an amendment to a conditional use permit. This was, uh, brought by Clint Pikarski, DBA Kenai River Cannabis. The amendment that he wanted was to remove the hours of operation, um, uh, that applied to his business because, uh, none of the other retail cannabis stores, uh, in Kenai have an hours of operation restriction. Um, there was one person from the public that spoke against it, uh, was a, a neighbor of property across the street. Um, you know, her issue was, uh, um, a lot of, of traffic at, at, you know, all hours if the, if the, um, if there were no hours of operation. Um, the, um, uh, you know, there was a, uh, uh, they, they, there was a discussion that the commission had that they, that they thought that, uh, the, the city should look at, uh, having some kind of uniform hours of operation instead of, um, um, the default is, is the same as, um, uh, liquor laws. It's a, uh, you have to be closed at between 5:00 AM and, and 8, 8, 8:00 AM. Um, and, and so, uh, with their discussion with the planner, um, uh, they were gonna have, uh, uh, the planner was gonna look at, uh, talk to licensees, you know, about what they thought about, uh, limitations on hours of operation when they thought that it was good for them to be closed. Uh, and also, um, survey, um, you know, also businesses in Soldatna, um, and, and businesses that are in the borough, uh, and even Homer. And, and, and also get feedback from law enforcement on it. Uh, and they would, there would at least be an informational item for discussion at their, um, meeting in July. Um, and then they, they might have a resolution on their agenda at a future meeting to make a recommendation about, to council about, uh, proposed change in code for uniform hours of operation, um, applying to all the retail stores. Um, they also approved, uh, an application for home occupation permit, um, uh, for, uh, Charlie's Angels, uh, for daycare. It was just a change in location, um, to a, to a new, a new item. I mean, a new location, and that was approved. And also the, the application to remove the restriction on hours of operations was approved.
Thank you. Uh, beautification? That would've been Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Navarre? I don't think they, they haven't met since, since the plan.
September, I think, 9th is their last meeting. No report.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Uh, mini grants steering committee, uh, no report. Reported the mayor. Um, I'll be very, very brief. I did attend the, um, memorial service for, um, Bill Osborne, um, at the visitor's, or the senior center, sorry. Um, very well attended and, um, it was a, it was a good, good, uh, service and, um, you know, it, it's, uh, kind of a bummer when you see these, the old guard, uh, you know, Ron Molson, um, not too long ago, and then, uh, Bill Osborne, some good guys. Um, so condolences to the Osborne family. Um, Fourth of July, uh, tomorrow and, uh, it's great. So, um, got my, my flag here and, uh, I think there was one more thing I, I had, but I, I didn't jot down that's escaping me right now, but if I think it out, I'll circle back. Um, administration report. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Well, per direction from the mayor, I'll make it brief too. Um, just heads up to council, we have been working with the, the marketing firm that you approved the contract for. We've been working through the possibility of marketing the Silver Salmon Derby for this upcoming year. They've got some really exciting ideas, we think, to increase participation. So, we're gonna keep working with them on that. That's probably going to be the first small contract. We went with them specifically for marketing of, of that event. Um, summer's coming up. We met with State Parks today. As you know, there's a lot of parking that goes along the Kenai Spur Highway from Eagle Rock. Once they fill up Eagle Rock, then they spill out into the right-of-way there. Parks is not going to discourage or promote the parking in the right-of-way, so they're gonna allow it again this year. Um, airport terminals, quick update, no significant issues over the last several weeks. They're gonna be shutting down the, a portion of the south end where the tables are outside of the restaurant right now. That area's actually gonna be, um, boxed off and they're gonna be completing the, um, asbestos abatement in that area. Uh, Dipnet is ramping up. We've, we've started moving on that very quickly and things really pick up early next week. Of course, Dipnet starts next Wednesday, so a week from today, we've got a lot of stuff to do. You've got your VIP passes that I handed out today. Um, I hope, uh, Councilmember Peterkin got one as well, so that gives you access to it. Can't bring your Dipnet with you, but you can go down there and check it out. Um, we have an all-hands meeting for all of the temporary staff and all the permanent staff that are gonna be, um, working in Dipnet. That's on Monday. Um, and the Russian exceeded a hundred thousand fish escapement as of yesterday. I think it's the highest escapement ever in the Russian River. And the first two days of July for the Kenai River looked pretty positive, so maybe we've got a good, uh, sockeye return coming here. You never know. Um, also, the, on the south side, as you recall, the fencing along the dunes on the south side was all destroyed during the, uh, storms last fall. Um, Mr. Frady's and his crew got those replaced last week, so those are up in time for the Dipnet fishery. Um, the Be Safe Minimize Your Wake signs should be installed next week. Um, we're having some problems with visibility there. On the south side of the river, we weren't certain that we could put up a sign that could be seen well, so what we're going to do is place a two-sided sign on the north beach. We're actually gonna get someone out in a skiff and stake it by them looking in, so we can put it in the highest visibility place possible. Last thing I wanna do is spend the money and time on this and put it up and then everyone says, what the heck is State of Kenai doing? You can't even see the sign. So, try to make sure that people can actually see it when we get it up there. It is gonna be four by eight, so it's gonna be big, two-sided. Um, we're gonna make sure you can see it. And then last, but of course not least, bluff erosion. Um, continuing to work with the Alaska District to try to get them to push forward with this, um, this approach that, uh, Murkowski's office came up with, had a conversation with him today. I'm continuing to work every week trying to get them to move and it's just, it's, um, it's been difficult to get them to move forward, but I'll continue to work on it. And that's the end of my report.
Any questions, City manager?
I got one. Um, what about parking, like, when the Dipnetters go down to the beach, like, on all the streets, like, across the street and down, like, by the ballfields and all? Do we, I mean, I'm just curious more than anything.
Mr. Osterman.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Peterkin, you know, most of the parking we see on the streets is actually on North Spruce, on, North Spruce on the other side of the highway. And they park there, I think, primarily because they don't wanna pay to go through the shack, so they haul their stuff up, down by hand. Um, you know, we don't have significant park, or parking issues on South Spruce there. Um, and, and we really haven't pursued trying to chase people away from North Spruce. And, you know, if you're willing, I guess we're, our idea is if you're willing to hike a mile down there, down and then hike, hike a mile back with all your fish, then, um, go for it.
Yeah, I just know it's, uh, it's, uh, when I've drove by, it seems not that safe to cross there. And, and that's my only concern. I guess I don't really care if they park on the gravel road there, but, but crossing is kinda dangerous in that area, but just maybe a future thing to think about.
Any other questions, City manager? Seeing none. Um, I do remember what I was gonna say. Um, Kenai Joe's, it's, there's a new tap house there that just opened up. I haven't had a chance to go by, but, uh, I saw it, it is now open, so, um, welcome, just wanna say welcome to Kenai. Uh, next we have the city attorney, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Members of council, I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, the city attorney? Seeing none, we'll move to Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Members of council, I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, the city clerk? Seeing none, we'll move to, uh, additional public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Mr. Peters.
Right, and I wasn't gonna address the council after the mayor said, oh, come on, let's get out here and enjoy the nice evening. Not liking to be a bad guy, I'll address the council. And something that I thought about and the rest of the public thought about, I think, um, when we have the ordinances and you request comments from the public, does anybody from the public, that's always at the beginning of the discussion. It's been my observation that often, myself and other members of the public, wherever they are, they have no idea of these issues until they come. I don't often. I come and I get the agenda and I go, oh gee, look at this or that and the other. And then you say, oh, would you like to address this issue? And I sometimes have a comment, but lots of times after you discuss the issue, I say, you know, because you, you're aware of it, you've spent countless hours studying it and you're, you know, aware of it, uh, I think, oh, well gee, I have a thought on that or that, but the public comment is gone. I don't know if, if you are seeking public comment and think it would be beneficial should somebody smarter than me come with a good idea, uh, that you would be able to get that out of them under this format because they'd sit and they'd say, oh gee, we should do it this way. And, uh, but the, the public comment is already gone. But anyway, I've thought about that for a long time and I hope I made it clear what I was thinking about. Is there some Robert's Rules or something that, uh, we would be violating if we did that?
Um, well, you know, and I honestly, I had the same thought when I first got on council, but I, I do understand why there isn't because once, once it turns over to the body, then it's, then it's, then it's the deliberative process of the body, that's what we're elected to do as opposed to having sort of a, a decision by committee with, now, work sessions are a different story, but if you said, you know, someone might make a comment up here and then someone that, you know, throughout the process, you'd have people that would be constantly wanting to sort of jump in to, you know, be a part of that deliberation. Um, whereas opposed to if somebody falls strongly enough about whatever, they're here, they're, they would come here prepared to speak, to sway the body at that point on whatever the issue is saying, I know you guys maybe have said this in the past or, you know, and then sort of steer or hopefully make comments that would steer the body to see things the way they wanted. But, but I think, uh, it was just, once it becomes a deliberative process, then it becomes owned by the body and I think it would just be problematic. But it is interesting, 'cause I had the same thought when I got on council, yeah.
Okay, well, sorry. I, I often feel like that Saturday Night Live thing when it first started and Gil Doradner played some character and she would come and go, and then someone that she was addressing would say, well, what about this? And then, and then she'd feel like a fool and say, never mind. I don't know if you remember that character?
Yeah, oh yeah.
You'd have had to been there, but that's how I often feel. So, to get off of that, I would just like to comment that the city is looking good this summer. The, the lawns are green and it looks like, uh, that. And, uh, that's a positive thing. I'm anxiously looking forward to entertaining the Dipnetters as I'm sure all of you are. And, uh, I think, I think it looks good. Enjoy the Fourth of July and thanks for listening.
I see Councilmember Glenn Dunning has his light on there.
I have, I have a, I have a question, uh, something I've, I've been thinking about for a while too. A, a lot of times we'll have our agenda and there'll be things to be introduced, the legislation, it appears on the consent agenda with an asterisk, okay? Ninety-nine percent of the people have no clue what the asterisk means or, or even how it's, how it pertains to them. Would it be useful if ordinances were to be introduced, even on the consent agenda, if they were read into the record by the, by the clerk? Okay, in other words, we have a radio show here and people watch. That would give the public a heads up as to coming legislation for the next, for the next council meeting. Do you think that would be a beneficial approach?
I don't know. I, I have just thought that Mayor Gabriel is always, uh, 'cause I know what the asterisk means and I've always thought that Mayor Gabriel does an excellent job of saying, well, would anybody like to address what's on the consent agenda? And it gives them a shot, you know? So, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point is if they don't know, they don't know. You know, other, other-
Well, I, I don't wanna get into Mr. Malloy, but I've always thought that nobody cares, you know? Well, no, I do think that. You know, I mean, it's obvious. Now, I know if they're gonna, you know, uh, do something that affects you, they're down here yelling, you know, for the children or whatever their deal is, but just knowing what's going on in the city, it just seems to me, and I may be wrong, I mean, what do I know? But it doesn't look like a lot of people are interested, you know? Uh, and, and, and I only beat up Mr. Malloy, I said, for his thing, because he was a real big one on the, the poor starving woman that worked hard and had two children, no single parent. And we wanted to put it on the internet and this was when the internet was new and, uh, but anyway, we wanted to put the meeting from that. I wonder what the statistics are of that. I bet you know how many people watch the council, uh, meeting on the, on the internet.
I have two right now.
Two are watching? You can tell right now?
I'm, I'm the third.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think-
That might give us an idea. I don't know.
I think that varies. It's a beautiful evening. If I was at home right now, I would not be watching this meeting.
Right, and here's the last of it. They, they wanted to spend five hundred bucks a meeting or something to have the high school kids. That, that was part of the thing that I didn't know if it was of value.
Councilmember Malloy.
In defense?
So, part of the point of that was it's on demand. So, so people can watch it when they want to. They could watch it between midnight and five AM if they want to, instead of, you know, because the parks are gonna be closed, instead of, uh, instead of, uh, watching us during the regular time. And, and people do, and, you know, like, uh, okay, you know, I know, for example, uh, individuals, uh, uh, that, that really do follow politics and here I'm thinking of someone that you may be thinking of, like it because they, they can check on it when there's something that's of controversy. Um, and, uh, they don't have to rely on what anybody tells them, that somebody said. They can just see for themselves what people actually said. And here I'm thinking Dwayne Vanik, but, you know, there's other people too. So, anyway, on demand is a good thing.
And I, and I agree with you completely, but, and I don't have a very good memory, so I'm probably wrong. However, I don't remember that as being part of the argument at that time about, because that is a good thing. You can look at it a week from now, but I don't remember that being in discussion. I just remember that poor woman that had two kids and she couldn't get anybody to babysit them.
And, yeah, just so you know, I've gone back to archive meetings to, to refresh on, on things that were said on, on a particular topic. I mean, it's very, it's very convenient and you get it straight verbatim from whoever the speaker is, so there's no, nothing lost in translation there, so, anyway.
Well, just so you all know, you're not alone. I do have looked at such things. So, and I think it's great, but, uh, whatever. Anyway, thank you. Have a happy, uh, isn't it wonderful that we're independent? Have a happy Independence Day and, uh, here's a complimentary pin.
As always, thanks, you. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Always, always entertaining. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it up to, uh, council comments. Um, council member or Vice Mayor Navarre?
Happy Fourth. It is the Fourth in Kentucky. Um, I know it's not there yet.
Oh.
And with that, no other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, council member Petty?
Uh, briefly, I'd like to thank, uh, Parks and Rec for the beautiful job of the flags that go down, um, the spur. Also, a reminder that First Thursday for the art show is tomorrow, since Ms. Nelson isn't here to remind us. And I'd like to thank all my colleagues for their valuable input and work tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning.
See you at the Fourth festivities in town and, uh, I'm looking forward to a, to a glorious Fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterkin.
Uh, thank you. Just happy Fourth of July.
Councilmember Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Well, um, thank you, Mr. Peters, for coming and speaking with us again. I certainly, uh, once again enjoyed dialogue with you. I also wanted to thank Elizabeth Odom, Cheryl Main and, and Linda Swerner for their comments on, you know, um, uh, public comments tonight in our meeting and, uh, you know, wish everybody happy Fourth of July. Have a great day tomorrow.
Thank you. Councilman Nextet.
Happy Fourth where you're sun, sunscreen.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be awesome. And, uh, under executive session, we've already taken care of that item. Uh, no pending items, seeing no other body, or business before this body, we adjourn.